Okay, good evening to all of you. The bell has rung, so the gavel goes down. I welcome you to our November 22nd, 2022, regular scheduled council meeting. And I'm pleased to see this big crowd out tonight. I know you didn't come out to celebrate Thanksgiving, so we'll jump right into the agenda. Got a lot of important business to do tonight. So as I call the meeting to order, I'm going to ask our town clerk if she will to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Our usual script. I'll ask Councilmember Dellinger if he will at this time to lead us in the pleas of allegiance and also the invocation. Please stand if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads as you wish. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to be together this evening and this opportunity to serve with everyone in this room and in this town. Lift everyone in the spirit of service to our community and to our neighbors. And be with those who are suffering through so many recent tragedies, both near and far. Be with them and comfort them through their loss and mourning, and return joy to their lives and hearts in time as only you can. Be with us tonight as we come together as a council, staff, and community, and grace us all with the curiosity and wisdom to lift up our town and make decisions that plant the seeds of vision that will grow and bless generations to come with peace and prosperity in this place we call home. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, the first item of business is always under the heading of petitions and comments, and so I'll just read to you the intro for that. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included in tonight's agenda. Citizens should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting. The board is, the council is interested in hearing your concerns, but may not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Just before we go further, if some of you desire, I think we can put some people down front here. If you want to have a seat down in this area, please come on down. And there may be a couple of seats back there. I'm not sure how many. Okay, Madam Clerk, did you have anyone sign up to speak this evening?
No, sir.
Okay. So with all of you here, if there's a person who came for the express purpose of desiring to share comments or petitions with the council, I will entertain you to do that briefly at this time. If you came for that purpose, would you raise your hand and I'll try to recognize you. Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move along. Council, the next item is the adoption of the agenda. And I would draw your attention to the fact that there is a slight modification under public hearings. It's recommended that item two become item three and item three become item two. So we'll just flip-flop, if you will, those two items on our agenda. And with that noted, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the agenda.
移到
Okay, properly motioned and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, and there is none, thank you.
I'm not aware of any presentations this evening. Staff, anything from anybody? No, okay. All right, thank you. Next item of business is the consent agenda. There are seven items on that. I'm sure councilmembers, you've had a chance to look at those. So unless anybody wants to pull an item from the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion for approval of that.
移到
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance and Ms. Behringer. Properly motioned and seconded, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, there is none, no. Okay, the next item of business is under item H, and there are public hearings, and we have three public hearings this evening. And so we're going to start with item number one, which is a Tier Two conditional rezoning, known as CZMP 2201 Burnett Farms. And that will be our first public hearing, and I will recognize Mr. Trezenberg, who will make the staff presentation. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. All right. Tonight we have CZMP 2201 Burnett Farms for you. This is the public hearing. The applicant is Madison Holding LLC. The owner's is another LLC, Burnett Farms. The location is along Auburn Nightdale Road, directly adjacent to Auburn Village. The tract size for this project is 45.02 acres. This is a subset of a larger tract of land that actually spans both sides of Auburn Nightdale Road and also some on the east side of Rock Quarry Road. And as the mayor noted, this is a Tier Two master sketch plan. And when it came in, the request was from single-family residential 20 to multifamily, what would have been two at the time. Now it's R2 and would be converted to multifamily B upon adoption for the development of a maximum of 475 dwelling units, 350 apartments, 125 townhomes at 10 and 1/2 units per acre. So again, here is the location of the property. Here is the existing or just now finishing Auburn Village development, 55-plus community. You have the Auburn Station development, which would be just down here, which is still yet, I believe, to break ground. You have Springfield Baptist Church. Here is Rock Quarry Road. And you'll see just off to the lower right-hand portion of the picture here, this is the future 540 corridor. So again, the parent tract includes all of this here, as well as this across the way, and a small piece over here as well. But for right now, we're just talking about this first 45 acres. Here is the Google view of the site from Auburn Nightdale most recently. And again, here's the existing zoning pattern. Auburn Village was an R4 conditional development that allowed for paired homes as well as single-family homes. We have rural agricultural for right now along Wall Store Road. This area again was R20, so that converted to R2. The RA would have been R40 under the old ordinance. And then again, we do have the limited access highway overlay in play for portions of the future property. Just a little bit of zoning history, not a lot out here, as this was brought into the, some of this was brought into the ETJ not too long ago, but there are a few cases here. You see there for Auburn Village, that case originated in 2016, and then Auburn Station, which originated in 2021. The R2 district allows single-family residential lots at a maximum rate of two dwelling units per acre under the old R20, that was 20,000 square feet per lot. But mostly the uses focus on single-family dwellings, as well as a few special uses, such as schools, community centers, public safety facilities, and other civic types of uses. The applicant has proposed to limit this, though, just to multifamily, including apartments and townhomes. Again, this is from the selection list under the previous ordinance, the time at which they submitted, which would be adopted, if adopted, would be adopted as MFB. There are stormwater control features. They're hoping to integrate those into the recreational opportunities and have put in a condition to upgrade to commercial-grade black aluminum picket fencing. Within the multifamily apartments, they've proposed a clubhouse with the gym, health club, a minimum of 6,000 square feet, the swimming pool sun deck, a minimum of 2,500 square feet. They will have a play lawn and outdoor gathering space of at least 150 by 75 that can be used informally for different things. There will also be a landscape dog park with some seating for users and totaling a minimum of 2,000 square feet for the pups. In terms of architectural guidelines, they have proposed brick veneer or similarly similar masonry products, very typical of what we're seeing come forward as conditions now, including fiber cement siding, no vinyl. Vinyl would not be used, I'll just jump down here to C, would not be an exterior finishing material, but could be used for accents. Most windows are going to be vinyl these days unless you have the rare person who wants to put in wood. So there is allowance for those things to be vinyl, just as they are in most projects around town. The masonry component would be a minimum of 20% per building. And they have provided offsets in both the plane and the roof line to give variation and interest to those apartment buildings. The primary facades addressing public streets will not have open breezeways or visible stairwells, so they will look like a singular building from the road. The townhouse units will include the landscape dog park or a landscape dog park as well, a minimum 2,000 square feet. Townhouse units will have architectural guidelines as well, including two-foot horizontal offsets every two units. Each unit will have at least a 12-by-20 one-car garage, which could be front-loaded. Those front-facing garage doors will be paneled with carriage hardware and windows, and they will vary from building to building, so as not to be monotonous. Again, the vinyl siding not being permitted except for those accents and functional elements. 20% again commitment on the front facade to the masonry stone is what they've offered. Turn-down slab or stem wall construction with 12 inches exposed on the front, so no slab-on-grade. Articulation in the side elevations, they will include side entry doors possibly and two or more windows. Gable ends will have horizontal band boards at the attic floor level, different color and pattern to break up the wall of siding. First-floor glazing shall consist of front doors with windows, side lights, or transoms. They have proposed eight-inch minimum eaves. The townhouse units will also have covered entry porches and stoops. The front-loaded townhouse units will have at least a 10-by-10 rear patio. And townhouse units with rear yards along Auburn Nightdale shall have enhanced landscaping, so we're not looking directly into the backyards of those homes from the road. Again, overall neighborhood character, Auburn Nightdale Road and Rock Quarry are medium and major corridors with a significant amount of daily traffic that is growing out in that area as the 540 project gets closer. Auburn Village, again, was developed at 379 lots. The traffic data is provided there just as background and reference. Again, the last we have from DOT is going to be in 2019, but you do see there it is starting to grow already even then. In terms of other community information, there was a neighborhood meeting held on May 16th at the Avery Street Rec Center, approximately 28 people in attendance, eight of those within the notification area. So you can see one of them, a nearby adjacent property owner, and then several folks from within Auburn Village. Going to the master plan, again, 45 acres, generally at MF2, the 5,000 square feet of development area is needed for the first unit proposed, and then an additional 3,000 for each unit above, so that's the amount of land area that's needed. A maximum total of 475 units has been proposed. And here we have just some of the general lot information for both apartments and townhomes in terms of the lot width, the required setbacks, and the required separation between buildings. And here is the project master plan. There are two points of entrance off of Auburn Nightdale Road, two interior streets that were proposed for future connection as part of the Auburn Village approval. Those will be connected and carried through, but this will be the townhomes directly adjacent to some of the paired homes and some single-family homes back here. The apartments will be pushed to the east, closer to where the future node will be at Auburn Nightdale and Rock Quarry Road. This will be kind of the main entrance where most of the traffic, though, will go to access the apartments, the clubhouse, the mail facility are all going to be right here. There will be an entrance traffic circle of considerable amount of size that will also serve the adjacent property to the east in the future. There will be access points possible along this whole corridor, subject to spacing requirements. This median divided collector will extend to the north to eventually connect out to Wall Store Road. We have some pretty significant wetlands back here, which is also the location for part of the public greenway recommended in this location. Currently, the public, future public greenway in Auburn Village stops somewhere right about in here. The future greenway will need to go north of this pond feature, most likely, and then continue along the stream, eventually providing public greenway access out to Rock Quarry Road and beyond. So just to be clear for right now, there won't be a continuous movement available until this parcel were to develop and come in. We have had some preliminary discussions about that tract. Considerable amount of tree preservation area up in here. They are preserving this existing pond as well and working to make it an amenity to the site. You can see right here that some of these townhomes will be rear-loaded, so we have an alley right here, so all of the ones in orange will actually be rear-loaded alley access, so garages on the back. The remainder of these will be front-loaded. So I think I highlighted the traffic access when going over the plan. If you have any questions on that, I'll be glad to go over that in more detail. The tree canopy cover was a sliding scale from 18 to 20%, which was the rule at the time of Seminole. This master plan envisions preservation of up to 18.1%, plus there will be additional canopy provided with new plantings, so that eventually that number will be much higher. In terms of perimeter buffers, there will be a 25-foot buffer along the northern boundary, a 25-foot portion along parts of the western boundary adjacent to Auburn Village, and then a 15-foot along the southwestern boundary where the townhomes are proposed, adjacent to the, I believe it's the paired homes in that location. So that's a different classification based on two homes being, or two dwelling units being in one building. Street trees, of course, will be provided every 40 feet along all roadways, internal drives. Open space, as with all residential projects, there is a required 10%. This will be well above that 10%, including preserved wetlands, preserved tree canopy, the public greenway, the preserved pond, active recreation center with clubhouse, open playfield, the dog park, and private trails. All of these will be owned and maintained by the HOA. In terms of environment and floodplain, there are no designated floodplains in this area, but we do have buffered streams here along the north. This is the stream that I was referencing that is kind of the home to the public greenway that would come through this area, and then we have the smaller stream cutting through the southern portions of the site. Both of those will be buffered and protected according to state rules. Water service will be provided by the city of Raleigh. You can see the existing lines there that they will be tying into and connecting. There is a forced, pump stations will be down over here. As the project would move through, if approved, we will continue to check subsequent plans for lighting, make sure that the lighting levels meet UDO regulations, the stormwater management devices would be reviewed against their very specific requirements of how much they need to detain. Water lines and hydrant spacing, as well as all landscaping and parking, will continue to be re-verified throughout the process to make sure they are not falling below required minimums. And finally, plan consistency. Just again, as noted, when considering rezoning requests, the planning commission is required by state statute to make written recommendation regarding the consistency of the proposal to you as the council, looking at the town's current comp plans and other adopted plans. And after the case is heard by the planning commission, it will come back to you for a decision, at which time it is incumbent upon the council to adopt a statement of reasonableness. And so our public hearing recommendation is that once you have heard comments this evening, including concerns and questions from the general public, that this case be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding that planning consistency. With that being said, that's all I have to present for you this evening. Be glad to take any questions, and the applicant is here as well to speak on the applicant's behalf.
Okay, thanks so much, Mr. Trezenberg. Yeah, I'll go around to council and see what questions they may have. I'll start with Mr. Matthews to my left.
Nothing at this time.
Okay, anything for Mr. Singleton?
Nothing right now.
Okay. Ms. Behringer?
Mr. Dellinger?
And Mr. Vance?
No questions at this time.
Okay. So I assume the applicant wishes to address the council on this matter, is that correct? Okay. If you'd announce your name and address, I'm sure you know the drill.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am Beth Blackman with Timmons Group, 113 Lager Lane, Garner. Thank you for hearing our proposal this evening. We're excited to continue our work in Garner. I want to thank staff for the presentation and working through this master plan process with us. Jeff covered most everything, but I wanted to point out that looking at the Garner Forward comprehensive plan, this is a mixed activities center. Mixed activities center focused on complementary land uses that create a connected lifestyle approach to living, working, and shopping, all in approach to living, working, and shopping, all in close proximity with integrated sidewalks and pedestrian networks. So we're proposing to rezon a portion of this parcel, just a residential for this portion with townhomes and apartments. But this was really carefully thought out because you have existing Auburn Village, I guess it's not really to the west, but it's kind of to the southwest of this property. And thinking about that, it's an aged street neighborhood, and so if this parcel immediately started more intense, higher uses right at the property line with Auburn Village, that would not leave you any kind of transition from the existing neighborhood. So by thinking and carefully planning this out, we transitioned with townhomes from the paired duplexes and the single-family homes with the apartments clustered closer to Auburn Nightdale Road, and so that it felt like you had a transition as you got closer to the intersection of Rock Quarry and Auburn Nightdale Road. You could then expect in the future, when those areas develop, that their more intense uses would be buffered from the existing neighborhood that you have. So there was a lot of thought put into this, and so even though the rest of the develop, the rest of the property is not being developed at this time, that is the, what is envisioned as the project moves forward. And I wanted to touch on the Garner Forward Transportation Plan. There is a collector road that was shown connecting Auburn Nightdale to Wall Store Road, so we've incorporated that into this design. It is a two-lane median divided, but we did rear-load the townhomes on that so that you would not have, or you'd have limited driveways. And Jeff mentioned the existing sub streets from Auburn Village, those would be connected to. The first one, Ol' Vin, is going to be a ride-in, ride-out. You can see the median is still across that entrance of that intersection to keep people that are coming off of Auburn Nightdale Road moving forward so that they're not stopping to turn left, and just kind of make it a little bit easier, keep the traffic flowing. We did have a neighborhood meeting that was well-attended, mostly Auburn Village residents and a representative of Springfield Baptist Church came as well. We talked about traffic, we talked about the types of units, future development in the area, and the connections to Auburn Village. Though we've continued to have conversations with the residents, the developers here as well, Madison Holding, David and Daniel Smoot are here, traffic engineer Jeff Hokenadle is here, and I'm available for any questions as well.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, thank you very much. I'll start with Ms. Behringer, if you have any questions. Okay, Mr. Dellinger, anything?
Let the public speak first.
Okay. Mr. Vance, anything?
No questions.
Down here, Mr. Matthews or Mr. Singleton?
Just to clarify, Ms. Blackman, the intersection area of Ol' Vin, that median goes back to the next intersection, the, that, that will connect into Auburn Village.
Correct, that's English Violet would still, would have a connection, so someone coming on the collector road could turn left into Auburn Village at that point, or turn left out of the neighborhood when the time came, that, if they wanted to go that way.
Okay.
Mr. Matthews?
How far is that going to eventually run? Is it just going to stop there? I was looking at it, and I was not sure if it actually was going to go farther up to the way?
The, the new collector road?
Yes.
Well, so eventually it would run to Wall Store Road, but there's only one more parcel between this property and Wall Store Road. It's not, the separation between Auburn Nightdale and Wall Store Road is not very large, yeah, as you can see on that map there. Whoop. So there's just like one more parcel. But it'll just give people another option, you know, a way to go for traffic. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Daniel Smoot, and my brother David and I are the developers for this community. I'd like to point out that we are rare Wake County natives, and we are delighted to create this neighborhood and a place for, you know, new families to live. We're very excited to be in Garner, working on this project. We've tried to have a good dialogue with staff, thinking about this project and to be very thoughtful about it. We've engaged with what I'd like to call the historic, or, you know, folks who have been in this area for a long time, as well as the new folks in Auburn Village. I've met multiple times on-site with them to take onboard their feedback, to really improve this plan and put forward a great project. We're just, we're very excited about it, and appreciate your consideration. I would look forward to answering any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you so, so much. Anything over here? Down here? Okay, barely none, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Town Council. My name's Chad Essick, I'm a zoning and real estate attorney with the law firm of Portersprue here in Raleigh, or in Raleigh. I've been working with the developer, Madison Holdings, on this since the property first went under contract back in May of 2021. In doing so, we've worked very closely with the owners of this property, Burnett Farms LLC, and its principals, Mary Grady Coontz Bell and Battle Coontz. Mary Grady and her husband Vic Bell and Battle, and his wife Catherine are here in attendance tonight. They've asked me to speak here tonight on their behalf and express their very strong support for this rezoning and the master plan that's being proposed. As you may be aware, Burnett Farms owns a significant amount of land in this area to the east and south of the area proposed to be rezoned. It's been in their family for three generations, almost a hundred years. They have a strong vested interest in the design and the layout of this project to ensure that the development of this site has a positive impact. As part of this process, we work very closely with Burnett Farms, as well as their legal counsel, on the details of the master plan to ensure that Madison Holdings' project complements the remaining land holdings, not only from a standpoint of access and utilities, but also in terms of uses, density, product types that are being proposed as a part of this project. It's important to them that what Madison Holding is proposing dovetails with their future plans. For instance, Burnett Farms will retain ownership of the twenty acres that was discussed to the east of this site at the intersection of Auburn Nightdale and Rock Quarry Road. They believe this twenty-acre site is ideally suited for future commercial development, and that commercial use would be logical next to the apartment uses that are being proposed at such a prominent intersection. So Burnett Farms is excited about this master plan and rezoning and would urge your support and approval. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, members of council.
Okay, thank you. Let me see if anybody has questions for Mr. Essick. Any, any from you? Damien? Okay. None here? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. Okay, anybody else here for the applicant? Okay. So this is a public hearing, excuse me. Are you, are you here?
Again, for the applicant.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Marshburn, and members of Town Council and the Planning Commission.
What's your name, please, sir, if you don't?
Mike Nedriga, 1540 Grand Willow Way in Raleigh.
Okay, thanks.
I'm the owner of Capital Partners of North Carolina, a small business that originated here in Garner several years ago. Though I recently relocated to North Raleigh, I've lived in Garner for many of the last twenty-nine years, and I'm excited to see the tremendous growth within the town, as well as in areas east of the town with construction of 540 well underway. My business is focused on property acquisition and residential development in the areas of Garner, Clayton, and Raleigh. We, we are currently under contract to purchase the seven-point-seven acre property at Zero Wall Store Road and the one-acre property at 2920 Wall Store Road. I've had the pleasure of working with Madison Holdings since early this year to coordinate access to utilities and roadways and create a similar development to that which is proposed for Burnett Farms. Since our properties share a common property line, we're in the early stages of proposing a master plan for our site on Wall Store Road, and will continue to work closely with Madison Holdings to ensure that our proposed development complements Burnett Farms and provides a future beneficial impact to the community. I'm excited to have the opportunity to work with Madison Holding and coordinate details of our pending proposed development. Approval of their master plan and rezoning requests will undoubtedly create a positive and lasting impact to the Garner community and provide a path forward for further development of the properties on Wall Store Road. I hereby stand in support of the rezoning request and urge your approval. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. Questions for this witness, anybody? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Anybody else for the applicant that wishes to speak? Okay, seeing and hearing none, are there persons here? This is a public hearing, so I recognize members of the public who may desire to speak on this matter. As you probably know, the council's not going to take any formal action tonight, this will go to the Planning Commission, they don't come back to the council. But are there persons here which should speak in favor of this, of this project? Okay, and we'll ask you if you will, most people are doing this to hold your comments to about three minutes if you can, sir.
Good afternoon, I'm Mike Poole. I own the property that is the seven-point-seven acres that's on Wall Store Road. I guess I'm affected by this development much or more than anybody because the connector road is going to come right by my property line, probably within a hundred feet of my house. But the plans that they proposed with landscaping, pavement, a median, more pavement, landscaping, more or less two lanes in, two out, I know there's going to be traffic, there's going to be disturbances, but things are changing, and you might as well realize it, and I don't want to oppose it. I feel like no further than it's coming by my house, even though it's coming right by it, I'm not going to be affected that much. I mean, this afternoon, you couldn't get out of my driveway for traffic, so it's only going to get worse, but at least there's another road. You just learn to work around it. The people that I have my contract with have been very upfront, as long as the folks with Burnett Farms, they've kept me informed, let me know everything that was going on, and I see no reason not to approve it. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Poole, okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this issue?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. My name is Kim Hamel. I live at 198 Desert Sand Lane in Auburn Village. We've been there for thirteen months now. When we looked at Auburn Village just over a year ago, year and a half ago before we moved in, our house on Desert Sand Lane backs up to this previous gentleman's family's property, so we've got all woods behind our house and, and next to our house, but we knew that the way that things are, are growing here and acres of trees had to be taken down to build our homes in Auburn Village, so it doesn't surprise me that this development is coming. My hope is that there's going to be, and it's my understanding, that there'll be a certain area of trees that will be left, and it's good to know that the apartments are a little bit further from Auburn Village, and it's the townhouses that are closer, but before even that, there's going to be, there, a road going, you know, two ways with a center, what do you call it, in the, you know, in the center of the road berm or whatever. So, I mean, my husband and I have adjusted to this idea, but mostly what I want to say is that we appreciate from, I forgot the name of the company, Holding, thank you, Madison Holding. We had been in touch with Daniel Smoot since before the last public meeting in, in last May. When we received a, a letter saying that this was going to be happening, I, I looked at it and I saw, you know, Daniel and his brother's names on it, and I contacted Daniel, and I said, "I'm a visual person, would you mind coming out? I'll gather a couple of my neighbors, and can we just walk into the woods? I just want to have an idea of what you're doing here." And he very readily did. And then this past weekend, he had contacted me and said that he was willing anytime this weekend, if there was some neighbors that wanted to get together again and walk into the woods. Makes me a little nervous this time of year because I don't think the snakes are asleep yet, but that he was willing to come out. So I just appreciate the communication that at least my husband and I and some of our neighbors have had with, with the company. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I know another gentleman was coming forward. Let, let me just mention at this point, I appreciate your adhering to our time limit. Usually, in a big crowd like this, if there are a lot of people who are agreeing, in this case, who are in favor, we ask you to, we'll ask you after this speaker, if you want to just raise your hand and support, we probably won't try to hear from each person if there are a lot of people here. Go right ahead and introduce yourself, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Robbie Cross, 6840 Rock Quarry Road, which is right around the corner from Auburn Village. I moved there in 2018, and Auburn Village was started somewhere into 2017 to 2018. And I believe there's somewhere close to four hundred units in Auburn Village. Just north of me, Food Lion, ninety-two townhomes going in there. A half mile north of me, ninety-plus acres of townhomes. One mile south of me, eight hundred units at Old Balcom and Rock Quarry. All on two-lane roads. Turning lanes, they don't cut it. I believe we're putting the cart before the horse. Need to have four-lane roads before all this takes place. Coming over here tonight, four miles from here, four to five miles, I'm going against traffic, twenty miles to, uh, twenty minutes to get here, and I'm going against traffic. This is before all of this construction has even started. I ask you to go out there from four to seven in the afternoon and look at the traffic, or from six to nine in the morning, right now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. I was intending to hear from folks who were in favor and then get to those who were opposed as Mr. Cross was there, so are there others who came to speak who do not favor this particular project, other than Mr. Cross, who just spoke? Okay, we'll hear from two or three of you and see how many others are, are in your position.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Michael Beporis, I am a resident of Auburn Village, actually 175 Auburn Village Boulevard. I am a twenty-five-year resident of Garner and have seen development and the recent increase in development in the area, but specifically in regards to this rezoning request. This request from Madison Holding LLC to rezon the proposed Burnett Farms plot from our twenty single-family residential is inconsistent with the current adjacent land use of adjoining areas. The requested density and zoning change does not match other similar requests or approvals within the town of Garner and will set a precedent. The location is not adjacent to a commercial highway overlay or even a residential arterial overlay, or even a commercial- overlay or even a commercial district as other multifamily high-density developments in the town of Garner are. Even though the site is close to the limited access highway overlay, which is the future I-40, that right-of-way acquisition has not even commenced. The proposed development will predate the completion of I-40 by at least five years. The proposed development will congest what essentially is a rural road, Auburn Nightdale Road, and given that, the proposed 405 high-density units will lead to significant amount of cut-throughs into adjacent Auburn Village. Connecting into Auburn Village street network by a high-density development with the potential of almost 1,900 daily trips onto Auburn Nightdale Road will undoubtedly contribute to cut-throughs. In addition, Auburn Village is a 55-plus community with many residents of various ages and mobility levels which utilize the sidewalks and crosswalks. Increased traffic and the varied driver demographics from an adjacent multifamily housing are not a good mix for the internal pedestrians within Auburn Village. I respectfully request that you deny this rezoning request as inconsistent with the surrounding areas not being able, not being within a highway or a residential arterial overlay. While we all support growth, let's do it smartly and have this parcel remain our 20 single-family residential in response to the concerns of the community. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. I'm going to ask you this time for a show of hands, for those of you who are appearing here tonight in regards to this particular project, and you favor or would speak in favor of it. Are there others? Okay. All right. How many of you are here tonight that would speak against this if you had the opportunity or opposed to it? Okay, I appreciate it. I think you can understand that we weren't, are not able to hear from each one of you, but for the sake of time, I will hear from one other person who, if you wish to speak at this time, that you're opposed to the project. Okay? Do you have some agreement as to who may speak on your behalf or just? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I just want to say good evening and appreciate the chance to speak with you. I don't have a lot to-
Tell us who we're speaking to, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. Olaf Rixell is the name. I live at 289 English Violet Lane in Auburn Village.
Thank you.
And I just think that this proposed development is kind of excessive in size and, well, in number of residents. I mean, we're talking about taking an R20, or R2, you know, zoning, which is two, roughly two dwelling units per acre, and turning it into something that's going to have 10 dwelling units per acre with probably, with, given the number of units, living units there, it's probably going to involve at least 1,000 cars. And it just seems kind of excessive for the area, and I'm just going to leave it at that. But thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your time, sir. Okay. I'm going to turn to council at this point. Well, I guess I should close the public hearing. Jeff, where are you? I'm sorry. Yeah, anything else from the town?
No, we're just, we're here to answer questions.
Okay, all right, all right. I'll hear from you, ma'am, since you had indicated earlier you want to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Glor Durkin. I reside at 242 Azurmas Drive. I just want to second what the last two gentlemen shared with you. Rather than being repetitious and going through it again, I would just like to be noted as seconding what they said.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay. Council, you think you have a pretty good understanding of the people in the audience who support or who oppose to it? Excuse me?
So they don't want it.
Some do.
Well, I think we have probably heard enough as it relates to the public hearing, and so I'm going to give council an opportunity to go ahead and discuss it amongst yourselves. Mr. Dillinger?
A few questions. Looking, this initial tract is about 179 acres, is that correct? I don't know if I need to ask the applicant or staff, but the initial tract that this is subdivided from is about 179 acres?
Does the applicant want to answer that?
It also, this entire, that entire tract in our future land use plan is designated as mixed activity center. And you read part of it, and the rest of it talks about even higher density and uses. And what is the plan for the rest of the tract? And why are you not simultaneously going for the rezoning to commercial if that's ultimately what it's going to be? I've seen talk about adding commercial down at 401 and missed different interpretations of the land use plan that didn't result in commercial. So is there any reason there wasn't a master plan put together that is consistent with the future land use plan?
At this time, we contracted to purchase 45 acres of the 179. And as was mentioned before, the property owner wants to be very thoughtful, particularly with the 20 acres that's planned east from what you're looking at there. But really, you know, the first thing that needs to be developed is the residential. In order to think in the future about a commercial use, you have to have a certain number of rooftops to attract that type of investment in commercial uses. Whereas today, there is an immediate demand for residential use that we could fill with this development. But the idea is to keep, particularly on the west side of Auburn Nightdale Road, to keep that 20 acres available so that when there are enough rooftops, think about Edge of Auburn, that council approved, as was mentioned, off Old Balcom Road, down Rock Quarry, there's a lot of development going on. What's the Raleigh side of Rock Quarry Road? In the future, this intersection of Auburn Nightdale and Rock Quarry will be a great node, but at the present time, it's really, it's the demand to fill that residential. We just didn't want to, you know, fill it with residential and not have it when we want it in the future for commercial. And that's why we were very thoughtful about taking this piece and saying, "This can be developed now."
I guess my point is that this doesn't, as getting rezoned, meet the land use plan, and we don't have guarantees that the rest of it will either. And there's a tremendous missed opportunity by, from developing the entire parcel and phasing in, right? You could do even more buffering if you're more dense on the eastern side of the property. You could have smaller residential abutting Auburn Village area. And you could also be more creative in terms of using the existing tree scapes there because you're required to do a certain amount of preservation, but if you do it all at once, you could cluster a lot of that preservation to be a natural buffer between Auburn Village. So I'm just concerned that there's a missed opportunity by ignoring the future land use plan and we don't get guarantees that there will be commercial there. There won't, it just, once we deviate from that plan, it continues to deviate. And I've seen it happen here at 401, and this is even more specific with regards to the level of intensity of commercial and retail, lower level and density again. But without doing it all at once, you don't, you're not able to phase it in appropriately because you're trying to pack in as many on this one rezoning. So I just don't find it to be consistent.
Thank you very much. Okay. I want you, council members, an opportunity to make comments at this point before I close the hearing. Anything from you, Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Okay. Ms. Barringer, anything? Okay.
Just a point of clarification. So to the west, as we were talking about, this is going to be a, technically a four-lane road, I guess it is, with a median in the middle or two on each side. And from what I understand now is the intent is to take it all the way to Wall Store Road as a connector? I just want to make sure I got that, understand that.
It is a two-lane, each, one lane each side of the median connector road.
Okay.
Only transportation plan. It is not called out as one of the larger roads. It is just the smallest, normal collector road. And so the, working with engineering to median divide it, something a little bit more and extra, but it's only two lanes total.
But the intent is to go all the way to Wall Store Road, is that the plan?
Eventually, when the property behind this develops, it would go all the way to Wall Store Road, yes.
So that'd be a buffer between your development and the existing Auburn Village, is that correct?
Correct.
I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else, council? Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point and ask council if you have any further comments before we call for a vote. Anything from any council members you'd like to share?
One comment.
Okay.
Again, related to other projects that have come before us and been in contradiction to the future land use plan, we've hired a consultant to do the character of land use and we sat with Planning Commission in a meeting, and this is the exact type of intense, this area around 540 that should be developed in a way that is intense for that future use, but you can only integrate with the neighboring community if you do that all at once because you can more gradually phase in the density and the transition space. It's again, an opportunity of, without any certainty as to what the future use for that other, those other parcels will be, we don't know if they'll be commercial. They might come in next week and say they want more residential and then say, "Well, we're phasing it more intense." I don't like that we don't have that certainty and they're not rezoning that entire area to be consistent, and we don't have any guarantees about the future of the use there around 540.
Ms. Barringer.
I mean, it has to come, to get rezoned again. So I mean, you know, if you don't like what's proposed in the next rezoning, you don't have to support it and vote for it. I'll say this, in that knowing Mr. and Ms. Bell and their family developed a large majority of Garner from his father, Heather Hills, Heather Woods, three of the four intersections, the Abramsboro and Timber, the Village, in front of that, other properties throughout the town, and they've been very particular about how they go about developing projects. They don't, they want to make sure whatever's there, they've been stewards of the property, and they want to make sure what may go there one day will reflect what they think is best for Garner. So I understand Mr. Dillinger's concern about rezoning the entire property, but when the next property comes in, if it's not what is deemed appropriate, then it can also, just like this, can be voted yea or nay, that could happen also. So I have confidence in the way that Garner was developed from the 60s up through now by those folks, that they did a fine job of doing it slowly, and I will put the confidence that that will continue.
Thank you, Ms. Dillinger. Anything else?
Nothing else, sir.
Okay. All right, I'm going to formally close the public hearing and ask for a motion. Council, you know what motion is before you is to refer this to the Planning Commission would be the next logical step, so is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that referring to CZ-MP 22-01 Burnett Farms be referred to the Planning Commission for their consideration and review.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Motion made in secret, properly before the council. If you favor the motion to refer this to the Planning Commission, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's opposition, you can vote no.
No.
Okay, the motion passes by a vote of 41, so we will hear back. I'm not sure exactly what the timeframe will be, Jeff, when it comes back to us.
At this point, it's, would be on the schedule for Planning Commission's December meeting, so the earliest it would come back to you would be January.
Okay. All right, thank you. And thank all of those of you who were here for this hearing. You've heard the vote here, so you'll receive notice, I'm sure, when it comes back to our agenda. All right. If you care to stick around, you can, but if some of you would need to leave at this time, if you'll leave as quietly as possible, I would appreciate it. Next item for public hearing is item number two.
Item number three. We're skipping.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry. I renumbered mine, too. Third one down. Tier one conditional request, CZ 2206 Fayetteville Road.
With inflation there, they could cut 400 plus.
That's right. Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Vouli, I think we can hear from you at this point in time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm going to present 5907 Fayetteville Road. It's conditional zoning amendment, CZ 2206. The applicant is 401 South LLC. Property is owned by the same. It's located at 5907 Fayetteville Road. Property size is 5.37 acres. This is a tier one rezoning request from Highway District, which is Wake County, to Light Industrial LI C268, conditional district, architectural and use conditions offered for townhome development. This is a tier one conditional rezoning request, which means there is no site plan or specific development proposal at the time. The reason for the request is that the applicant wants to connect to public water. Because this is outside of Garner's ETJ, a rezoning is required along with annexation petition to connect to public utilities when coming in from outside the ETJ. Here we have an aerial view of the site. And a street view of the same. Adjacent zoning and land use to the north is HD Wake County. To the south is R40W, Wake County vacant and residential. To the east is R40W, Wake County, Pine Dell subdivision, and to the west is Light Industrial vacant and Arvin Tractor Service and Insulating Incorporated. Here's a brief zoning history of the area surrounding the site. And the existing zoning district is Highway District, Wake County, and it is, property is currently used as residential and retail business. Proposed is Light Industrial LI 268 conditional. The LI zoning district is intended to provide a limited range of low-intensity industrial uses that are not noxious or offensive due to odors, smoke, dust, noise, fumes of vibration. Outdoor storage is prohibited. Here we have a list of proposed uses for the site. And another aerial photo of the site. Overlay notes, this property is located outside of Tunnel Garner's ETJ and is not located in any of the town of Garner overlay districts. If annexed and rezoned into the town of Garner, the property will be located within the commercial highway overlay. Commercial highway overlay applies to entire length of US 70 and US 401 located within the town of Garner's jurisdiction. the Town of Garner jurisdiction. The overlay district shall be designated on east side of the thoroughfare to a depth of 450 feet measured from the applicable right-of-way line. In cases where any portion of a building or parking area falls within the boundaries of the overlay district, the provision shall apply to any and all buildings and parking areas. The rezoning site is also subject to additional standards of the overlay district. Overall neighborhood character, the site is located across from the intersection of Fayetteville Road and Home Court. Fayetteville Road is classified as a thoroughfare on the Garner Transportation Plan and handles high volumes of traffic during morning and peak hours. There is also surrounded by, is also, the area around the site consists of single-family residential and retail commercial uses, and there is also an undeveloped lot to the south of the site. Meeting was conducted on October 20th, 2022 at 7:00 PM at the Garner Senior Center at 205 East Garner Road, and 11 persons were in attendance. Notifications were also sent to 117 tenants in the surrounding area. Here we have some traffic information that you may be interested in. Plan consistency. This is the directive for the PC meeting. And the plan that we will be concentrating on will be the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. And you have your statement of reasonableness for the town council meeting. Staff recommends that once the town council has heard the comments, concerns and questions from the general public, that conditional zoning request CZ 2206 be referred to Planning Commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency. Are there any questions for me at this time?
Thank you, Ms. Bowie. Counsel, questions for Mr. Bowie? I'll start with Mr. Vance this time.
I do not have any questions.
Okay, coming around to Mr. Dillinger.
No questions.
Okay, Ms. Speerger? None? Here. All right.
I think the applicant may be here to speak on behalf of their petition.
Okay, be pleased to hear from that person now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Kathy Rudisil with Rudisil P L L C. I am counsel to the applicant 401 South LLC. Happy to answer any questions you have. Hopefully, is more of a housekeeping matter as we're wanting to get access to services in Garner. Garner doesn't have the same zoning districts as Wake County, so we've moved from Highway District in Wake County to the industrial, light industrial here with the conditions noted in the report prepared by staff. Lifelong residents of Wake County, good people. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Anything on my right, Speerger? Anything on my left? Okay, thank you very much, for sure. Was there anybody else from the applicant who desired to speak? Okay, hearing is sign gone. Thank you. Anyone from the public who came to speak on this particular issue tonight? Okay, don't see or hear from anybody at this time. So, Mr. Bowie, I assume there are not other persons at this time that you know of who...
No, no, sir.
Okay, all right. I'm going to close the pub, let's see, we've asked from the public, nobody here? Yeah, okay. Close the public hearing and ask counsel to make comments as they care to, and then we'll call for a motion. Any questions or observations from counsel? Okay, a motion is in order on this matter to refer to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, recommend that CZ 2206 be referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Vance and Mr. Singeland, okay? All council members in favor of the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, vote no. And it is so ordered. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Okay, we will now go to the next item, which is now item three, I believe, with the Walters-Buffalo Development Agreement. I'm going to recognize our town attorney, who will be the presenter initially in this case. Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you can see from the agenda, the Walters Buffalo Development Agreement was continued for a public hearing, so it's on the public hearing portion. You also have on the new and old business portion of the agenda, the Walters Buffalo rezoning. So, just a brief recap, development agreements are authorized under state law in Chapter 160D, Article 10. The process that this particular one went through is it was proposed as a condition of approval of the rezoning request CZ MP 21-12. A draft was presented to council on September 6th of this year. There was an initial public hearing on October 3rd. That was continued till October, I believe, 18th. It wasn't quite ready with a redraft, so the continuation of the public hearing is occurring tonight. It was duly noticed and letters were mailed out to affected property owners, both that will be impacted by the Walters Buffalo project, as well as those along the White Oak-Bryan corridor. So, as a part of the rezoning, there's condition number 22, which I've quoted from that staff report, basically having to do with widening and restriping White Oak Road to provide for the four-lane cross-section about 1,300 linear feet north of the Bryan Road intersection and continuing south for another 1,000 feet before it will taper back into a two-lane section. Construction of these improvements would be subject to a, what's in the condition as a developer, a development agreement with the town, so that the White Oak Road improvements are completed. Again, the White Oak-Bryan Road improvements will be off-site to the Walters Buffalo development. In that condition, it covers the scope of the improvements, the timing for obtaining certificates of occupancy for homes prior to completion of the improvements, the town's assistance with obtaining right-of-way and/or easements needed for the construction or widening of White Oak Road, reimbursement or cost share from other developments benefiting from the improvement. So, those would be other developments in the area whose traffic would also go through the White Oak and Bryan Road intersection. Also would cover the developers' obligations if the improvement cannot be constructed due to right-of-way or other constraints, and coordination with a future traffic signal to be constructed by the State Department of Transportation or others. So, with respect to the scope of the improvements, those are defined in the development agreement as the corridor work, and that's in Section 2 of the proposed agreement, which is in your packet. The conceptual plans, which are very conceptual at this point, are shown on Exhibit B. The scope of improvements would include the design and construction, acquisition of the right-of-way and easements, as well as permits. The timing would be, it is defined in the development agreement in Section 8. The work would begin upon the later of executing this agreement, acquiring the right-of-way and easements, or for the developer, Pulte Home, to acquire the Walters Buffalo property. They would have to complete all of the White Oak and Bryan Road improvements prior to the plating of the 120th lot in their subdivision. And as you may recall, there's approximately 395 lots proposed in that subdivision. They did add a preliminary milestone schedule, which is attached to the agreement as Exhibit D. With respect to right-of-way acquisition, Pulte will obtain title certificates for the needed right-of-way and easements within 60 days of approval of the corridor work plans. That's outlined in Section 8.1. Pulte will also obtain appraisals and make offers based on the appraised value of the properties impacted by right-of-way or easements in Section 8.3. And if property owners do not accept those offers, the town would file condemnation actions, and that's also outlined in Section 8.3. With respect to reimbursement or cost share, this is defined in Section 6. The impact area for those proposed or future developments, which, whose traffic is anticipated to go through the White Oak and Bryan Road intersection is defined and shown on Exhibit E to the agreement. The corridor fee payments by the developers in that impact area would equal the final cost times the developer daily trip average divided by the aggregate daily trip average, and that's outlined in more detail with an example in the agreement. Again, this would be based on traffic studies done for each of the developments. And in Section 6, the town would collect fee payments from those other developers and then remit that as a reimbursement to Pulte. Additional developers' obligations, they are initially to seek cost-share agreements with the other corridor developers. It's outlined in Section 6.1. They are obligated to pay fee and lieu if the right-of-way and easements have not been acquired by basically next year, November 15th of 2023. Then, at that time, Pulte would pay 35% of the estimated cost. That's outlined in Section 8.4. And then, there would be, at the time of completion, a truing up to show that they have paid 35% of the final cost, or what their proportional per-rata share would be based on other developments that would be approved and developed in that impact area. Pulte can terminate the development agreement if it does not acquire the Walters Buffalo property on or before October 1st of 2023. That's outlined in Section 19. However, assuming that counsel, or if counsel approves the rezoning, the property would still be subject, the rezoning as it's presented tonight, the property would still be subject to Condition 22, so a future developer of the same property would be bound by that unless they submitted a new rezoning request at that time. With respect to the traffic signal, this would again be at the White Oak and Bryan Road intersection. The Spot Mobility Project was selected for $680,000 in funding in October. However, that is still subject to the North Carolina Board of Transportation approval. The installation costs for the traffic signal are not included in these improvements or final cost, as they will be borne by the state or the town based on this funding. So, tonight, the requested action with respect to the development agreement is to adopt the resolution in your package, which would authorize the town manager to execute the development agreement with Pulte Home Company LLC. Again, this is somewhat of a chicken and the egg situation. The development agreement is a condition proposed with the rezoning. On your agenda, public hearings come before new and old business. So, you can either take a vote on this at this time, or you could hear the rezoning action, make your decision on the rezoning, and then come back and make a decision on the development agreement. But the development agreement is subject to a public hearing and public comment, whereas the rezoning is not required to have public comment, but it's up to counsel whether they want to hear from the public on those specific conditions attached to that rezoning application.
Okay. I would suggest that we go ahead and deal with this matter, but I'll ask counsel if they have questions for you, Ms. Jones, in regards to your presentation. Anything?
Two quick questions.
Can I go right ahead?
One comment. And this is sort of for the benefit of the public. If you could, again, explain the development agreement as a voluntary contractual arrangement between the town, not a requirement by the town.
Yes. So, with respect to off-site improvements, such as those proposed for White Oak and Bryan Road, those are generally determined by a traffic study, and this project will contribute some traffic through that intersection. They would not be, my understanding is it is not at the level of 35%. They are lower than that, but with all of the other development in the area, they are contributor, and there is anticipated other development that will also contribute to the needs for that traffic signal. As a result, they have proposed a development agreement, which is a voluntary agreement, which has benefits and burdens to both the town and the developer, but it would allow these road improvements to be completed, borne by this developer, where they're assuming the upfront cost of all of that, to be done in conjunction with, or as phased in with the development that they are proposing. And then, similarly, it would be anticipated that any other developers that are coming through whose projects will impact this intersection will also contribute to the cost of that and reimburse as a result of that. My understanding is that this development agreement concept came because counsel was concerned about adding additional traffic to that area of the Town of Garner without having some road improvements and particularly a traffic signal at that intersection.
Other questions? Sort of a detailed question under Section 3.8, under condemnation. It states that Pulte will assume, will reimburse the town for all fees related to the condemnation, and those fees are calculated separately from the corridor fee. Is that correct? If that's on top of, it's not rolled into it with that fee?
So, the acquisition cost, whether they be by Pulte entering into voluntary payment or purchase and sales agreements with the impacted property owners, or whether they occur by condemnation, which the town has the authority to do, those costs will be incorporated into the final cost and therefore divided up among all of the developers. But because it's the town having to do the condemnation, then at that point, Pulte would have to reimburse the town for costs that...
I'm just, it reads, "All costs of the condemnation, including title work, filing fees, deposits and settlements, and attorney's fees shall be paid by Pulte." So, it doesn't sound like it's part of the corridor fee. It sounds like it's not related to that sort of divided distribution as it's written. It just says they'll pay it. It doesn't, and there's no reimbursement or...
Right. And perhaps that's because we assume that Pulte will be successful in acquiring the right-of-way, and they will have paid all those fees. The condemnation action is basically to ensure that the road improvements can go forward in a timely manner. But no, it was, it was assumed that that acquisition cost, no matter, would be a part of the cost that would be borne by all of the developers in the area and not borne by the general taxpayers of the Town of Garner.
Okay. You know, just because it conflicts under, with Section 7, a little bit, where it says the corridor fee payment provided for in this agreement shall be the only credit reimbursement payments and compensation or other remuneration to which Pulte shall be entitled in connection with the corridor work, corridor work for this agreement. And so, I'm just trying to reconcile where those reimbursement fee payment, where it fits in, whether it's part of the full cost. That's what you're saying, it's included in the full cost.
Oh, yeah, there's two things. So, the town is not assuming any cost of this project, including the cost of condemnation. So, if we do go forward with condemnation, Pulte will be paying those costs. However, in the final cost tabulation and allocating the proportional share to everyone... However, in the final cost tabulation and allocating the proportional share to everyone, that cost would be included.
Okay. I see that in the second.
So Pulte will have paid out that, but...
Last sentence.
I see that in the last sentence. It addresses the reimbursement. Thank you. Got it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Jones? Anything? Anything? Here. All right. Let's see. Are we going to hear from Pulte on this matter?
I believe they're here if they want to speak on the development agreement, or, and then you could hear from the public.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do, if you care to make any comments.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Marshburn, members of town council. We're pleased to be back again to present the revised development agreement for the White Oak Bryan Road corridor. I want to thank Ms. Jones and town staff for their part in bringing this agreement back to you tonight and for her thorough presentation. I do have a few comments, but I will try to be brief. When we were here on October 3, we discussed that the making of this agreement stretches back to April of this year. At that time, and at every meeting since, this council has consistently stated its desire to improve the safety of this corridor and to reduce the traffic congestion, resulting in benefits for the residents of Garner and the general traveling public. To achieve this goal, town staff and DOT agree that we must find a way to increase the traffic capacity of White Oak Road, and we must find a way to get a traffic signal installed at Bryan Road for safety and functionality. Collectively, this is the best near-term solution for achieving this goal. We presented a draft developer agreement at the October 3 meeting. During and subsequent to that meeting, several of you have provided comments, thoughts, and suggestions to the agreement. We appreciate everyone's collaboration on the agreement and believe that the version before you tonight addresses the items that we've discussed. Again, I appreciate Ms. Jones working with our attorneys and our outside attorney to prepare the document that is before you tonight. Based on the feedback that we've received, following is a brief summary of some of the changes to the document since October 3. We've added definitions as Exhibit F to better clarify the terms used in this agreement. The phrase "good faith efforts" has been removed from the document, and the process for making offers to purchase has been clarified. The preliminary milestone construction schedule has been added as Exhibit D. A map has been added defining the anticipated impact area. This is shown as Exhibit E. We've clarified the language that the agreement is binding on a subsequent entity if Pulte were to merge or be taken over, and we've agreed to post a bond or other security for the value of the work prior to beginning the work to ensure that the town's interests are protected. The right turn lane at Hillendale Lane has been specified in the agreement. The number of lots that can be platted has been reduced to 120, consistent with the verbal commitment that we made on October 3. I believe one of the most important changes, and I'm glad that Councilor Vance is here tonight, is that we're able to include NC DOT's commitment to the town that it will install a signal once the roadway improvements are made. This $680,000 Spot Safety Award by NC DOT to the Town of Garner came after Councilor Vance questioned the funding at the October 3 meeting. This award, combined with the improvements by private developers that the developer agreement specifies, completes the goal of installing a light at this dangerous intersection without funding from the town. So council stated goal in April was improving safety at this intersection and reducing congestion in this corridor. After much work by your town legal, planning, and engineering staff, much consultation with DOT at various levels, detailed work by multiple engineering and traffic consultants, and the advice of a legal expert in these matters, and after consideration of your thoughts and comments you had before you a developer agreement. This agreement represents a public-private partnership that will allow Pulte and other developers to construct the roadway improvements, resulting in reduced congestion in this corridor, benefiting the citizens of Garner area that use this corridor daily. Further, this agreement provides the improvements that allow NC DOT to fulfill its commitment to install a signal that improves safety and functionality at the Bryan Road intersection. I ask you tonight to consider this proposed developer agreement and agree with us that it achieves the goals that this council laid out for us in April and to support its passage so that we can continue our work to improve the White Oak Corridor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for this person, by the way? None? Well, this is a public hearing. Are there others who wish to speak to this particular issue regarding the development agreement? Okay. Again, I'll ask you to be sensitive to our timeframes as much as possible, and how many others are here tonight in hopes of speaking on this issue? Okay, so I'm assuming you and others will represent the concerns of others. Okay, get ready.
My name's Allison Lee. I live at 200 Lee Farm Lane in Garner. I'm a CPA licensed in the state of North Carolina since 2009. My license number is 34403, and I have worked in public accounting, including auditing, corporate and personal taxation, and bookkeeping, and not-for-profit accounting and budgeting since 2005. During my career, I have multi-year experience as the primary accounting function for two not-for-profit entities, and responsible for everything from writing checks and reconciling deposits to helping committees prepare budgets and meet those budgets, both on the revenue generation side as well as the expense side. The reason I say all that is because I would like to talk specifically about the financial details found in this development agreement compared to information and assurances the town has received from Pulte Homes in previous meetings regarding this corridor work. One of the things I would like for us to look at, as has been detailed by Ms. Jones, and so I'm not going to ask you to read it again. Section 2 defines the corridor work, "That Pulte shall, at its own expense and after all necessary approvals, perform the corridor work." It goes on to say that it will pay for the cost for acquiring necessary lands and easements on behalf of the town and/or the NC DOT therein required to complete the corridor work. And if you turn to Section 6, found on page 90 of your agenda packet, it then goes on to talk about a cost-sharing agreement. So we have a little bit of a tone shift. Prior to commencing the corridor work, Pulte will seek the participation of other corridor developers in sharing the final cost pursuant to an agreement, a cost-share agreement, in which the developers dedicate or agree to dedicate any right-of-way or easements over the property owned or being developed by the corridor developer if required to perform the corridor work. I would then, lastly, ask you to turn to Section 8.4, which is the Fee and Lie section, and is found on page 93 of your agenda packet. If Pulte can't secure these easements, it's already been stated by Ms. Jones and by council members in questions that the town would be responsible for doing condemnation. That's already in the agreement. Somehow, though, Section 8.4 is still in here, and it's an out for Pulte. It says that if title and land easements necessary to complete the corridor work have not been acquired by November 15 of 2023, which as we stand here today is less than 365 days, there's no reference to any condemnation, Pulte can pay the town a fee in the amount equal to 35% of the estimated cost. Goes on to say, "Upon payment of the foregoing fee by Pulte, Pulte shall be relieved of all obligations under this agreement and have no further obligation to perform the corridor work." This should be quite insulting to the town, because the reason that all of this started is because back in April of 2022, Pulte had a new development that they wanted the Town of Garner to rezon and approve. And the councilman here had said, "We're not going to approve anything else until this intersection is taken care of. It's too dangerous. There's too much traffic." As Ms. Jones had said, this actual corridor work is really outside of the area of the development that Pulte has that they want to have rezoned later. But they came to this council, and they said that on April 26, I had heard back and forth and multiple things that Pulte said that they would pay for all this. So I went back, and I watched all of the Old Town Council meetings, and I found it. On April 26, 2022, Mr. Randy King, the gentleman who just spoke before me from Pulte, he's the Director of Land Planning and Development with Pulte Homes, he spoke after Town of Garner staff member, Mr. Jeff Trezenberg's presentation regarding a solution to this traffic issue at Bryan Road and White Oak. During his presentation, Mr. King spoke about Pulte Homes working with the town to get this resolved, volunteering Pulte Homes to widen this area, to work with DOT about the stoplight. During this council meeting, when each council member was asked if they had any questions, Councilman Dellinger said at timestamp 28 minutes and 7 seconds, again on the April 26, 2022 meeting, "My first question is, how much is this going to cost?" Directed to staff, Mr. Trezenberg, who replied, "Under this scenario, the cost to the town should be pretty much just our time." At that point, Councilman Dellinger reiterated his question by stating, "Whatever agreement we are making, the town would not pay anything for any of these improvements." To which Mr. Trezenberg replied, "To my understanding, that is not on the table," and then turned it over to Mr. King, who stood up and quoted, "We do not anticipate the town would be sharing in those." Unfortunately, this development agreement, although many key items that were brought up by Councilmember Vance and Councilmember Barringer, although they were brought up and they were addressed in this, there's little fiscal benefit to the Town of Garner in this agreement. What started in April of 2022 as Pulte doing this work at their cost in conjunction with the NC DOT has now shifted to the Town of Garner policing and coordinating Pulte reimbursements for them by other people that want to develop in their impact area, and potentially shouldering 65% of a $2.5 million project, which is $1.625 million. And in reference, that is 3.3% of the Town of Garner's entire operating budget for 2022 to 2023. That's the magnitude of what we're talking about with this agreement and with this amount of money. Additionally, it has been said by Ms. Jones that this agreement, it does come with benefits and burdens to the town. She just said that the installation cost should, could also be added to the bill for the town, and we don't have a cost estimate of that. I think it's important that we realize that in 2022, 2023, the fiscal year, the budget was up 14.4% over the previous year. That is over double the five-year average of budget increases for the four-year prior. That's 6.8%. The mayor said, and I quote for his June 23 press release, "This has been one of the most difficult budget years, maybe the most difficult. We have a choice as the town. This is voluntary." That has been reiterated tonight. We are not forced to legally contractualize ourselves to this. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I think I saw a hand of someone else who wanted to speak.
My name's Joe Cook. Live at 2524 Wind Road. Thank you. I'm going to have a tough time following that. I just have a few concerns. You know, the land I have is big enough where I might be able to add a house, and I'm curious if I add a house to my land, would I have to pay Pulte to develop it? Not clear if I would be considered a developer at that point. You know, this road improvement, I feel is needed, and kind of has, as Allison said, you know, there's other ways to pay for it. I'm a contractor, and I'd hate to suggest this because I pay permitting fees, but maybe they could increase the permitting fees and somehow pay for these road improvements another way. That's definitely needed. I don't want to discount that, but thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Was there anyone else who are here who wish to speak on the matter? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Was there anything else from our attorney?
I'm here to answer any questions you may have based on those comments.
Okay, all right. Counsel, I'll turn it over to you for any questions, comments at this time. Start, Ms. Barringer. I'll go to Mr. Singleton.
No, sir, I'm fine.
Okay. Mr. Matthews? Nothing, okay. Mr. Vance?
Questions?
Okay. Mr. Dellinger?
A question, I guess maybe for the developer or Ms. Jones, but what has been the progress to date on the timeline for acquiring the property necessary for the corridor work? What's been done, and what's the best and worst-case scenario for acquiring all the property necessary?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Very good question. So although we have been a little bit delayed in getting this developer agreement back to you, just with some of the delays, we've been busy working, so our engineers have been putting together the preliminary plans that indicate which areas we'll need right-of-way from. I think at the last, at the October 3 meeting, there were a couple gentlemen who got up and spoke. They were concerned that the widening would affect their properties. We've been able to rule out affecting those properties. We're at a point where I believe, within the next two weeks, we would submit preliminary construction plans to your staff and to DOT to review and get DOT's concurrence on, their concurrence on the construction plans. Once we have indication that we're, that we have the right alignment and their limits of construction are correct, there are several properties that we'll start to reach out to and see if we can, we'll begin the process of getting appraisal on those properties, as well as verifying title for those properties, and then reach out to them to see if we can make offers. Once we get the approved construction plans, that's when we really would get formal with trying to acquire the right-of-way. So are we within six months of that? Yes.
I guess, again, the question, what's the best case for completing all of the acquisition in the worst case? Timeline-wise?
So there is a schedule that's included in, and I would say that that is sort of the schedule that we think this would work. So in Exhibit D for the White Oak widening, we're showing approval of developer agreement in November, completion of preliminary design in January, and complete right-of-way and easement acquisition in March of 2023. That's sort of the mid-range of when we think that would occur.
But March is the midway, so the best case would be January, which seems ambitious. Do you think March is the best-case scenario for acquiring all of the property necessary to begin construction?
So we have an attorney here who does this for a living, and so if we had the properties identified by January 15, and we're making offers to folks at that time, is March a reasonable expectation that we would be able to acquire through condemnation if we couldn't get it otherwise?
Yes, just to put it this way, how much negotiation will we do?
Yep. So I say, yeah, we think March is sort of the mid-range of where we think we'd acquire right-of-way.
And the worst case would be what?
So we want to start construction in January 2024. So, yeah, I think to have it in the June-July timeframe, that would be sort of pushing our schedule. Okay. Thank you.
Just going to hop on Mr. Dellinger's question. I believe at the last meeting, Mr. King, it was stated that of the concerns at Hillendale, but most of the property acquisition for easements has been pushed from the west side to the east side. It's most, most of it is all on one side of the road.
That is correct.
So, and there's a hand, just a handful of property owners over there to work with.
Five parcels.
Five parcels, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, counsel?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I do have a concern related to Ms. Lee's on that section for, I mean, 8.4, the fee and lie, and it, by some reason, being triggered, because that's a pretty late date, but if we got into that situation and Pulte got paid there, right now it says 35%, I think it should be more, because if you pay the fee and then the town is on the hook for finishing the development, right? And, I'm not finished. And that means in order for us to then get other developer fees to pay for the corridor work, we have to approve other developments. work, we have to approve other developments.
One way I could see that playing out is, you know, if we paid our 35%, which our traffic engineer tells us that we are about 16% of the impact on, on this corridor. So I think we're paying double our fair share. So we're, we're paying 35% that money the town could hold. As other developers come in, there are properties that front right on that corridor that have been previously submitted for development. As those properties come in, they would have to pay their share and do their road widening along their frontage, and the town would have our fee and lieu to hopefully work with them to get this improvement done without cost to the town.
But then, like I said, it puts us in the position of it's an added fiscal consideration for a project that comes before us that, oh, man, we should probably approve this if we want to get that road project paid for. Because otherwise, it's coming out of the town coffers, and yes, we passed a bond and there's some money there, but we're growing very rapidly, outpacing, and the projections I've seen over the next few years are, it's going to be difficult. And so I go back to, that was my one question, I was very prepared for that meeting, and I was, when Pulte said they're going to pay for all of it, I was, oh, well, this is going to be good. It'd be better if Pulte would pay for all of it, and then we could reimburse you as we do approve developments if we so choose to. Because it's not, it shouldn't be a fiscal consideration or burden on the town to finish this project, and you all can just build out the rest. One of my biggest problems with this agreement is you should be just as committed to finishing that improvement as you are to your development. That, that's, that's a partnership. That's motivating. When Amazon wanted to open early, we said, no, you're going to have to finish your road improvements. You, you should be just as committed to this improvement as onsite road improvements.
Could I read that sentence in 8.4? It says, "If title to the land and/or easements necessary to complete the corridor work have not been acquired by November 15, 2023." So that's a case where, for some reason, the town could not condemn this property. Meaning, you couldn't build the road, we can't build the road, no one can build the road. I don't know what would occur that would make that happen, but at some point, we've got to have an out. We own property down the road, we're trying to develop, and it, it is impossible for us to widen the road even through condemnation. Now, none of us think that would happen, do we?
I think what we think is that the condemnation could take much longer than anticipated. And that's a concern because then we're left having to finish it and pay for it.
I think we're, can you speak to that, please?
If I might, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to clarify one point. I'm David Farrell, attorney with Pulte Homes. Just to answer the councilman's question, if the property is acquired by a private acquisition, then whatever day the easement is acquired, that's the date that would basically make this no longer apply. If a condemnation is filed, because the town has quick-take authority, the title would vest upon the filing of the action, not upon the ultimate conclusion of the condemnation. So the condemnation would not have to be completed by November, just filed. So again, when we looked at this, this is a very narrow situation that, you know, just is out there for some really unexplained or unexpected consequence. Thank you.
And I guess you hit the point that that consequence then would fall onto us.
Well, the agreement provides for Pulte to contribute, I think, double their cost. But, but the point is, the, in discussing this and working it out with staff, it seemed that date was a safe day that would not create any heartburn or burden on the town or Pulte. Because again, Pulte's goal is to talk with these landowners and try to reach an agreement, a private agreement, and we want to have time to do that, but the condemnation is there kind of as the backstop. So that's, again, why the date was chosen and why the provision, again, was drawn very narrowly and would really only apply if an unexpected circumstances occurs.
But you wouldn't have a problem with the date being extended another year, then?
You know, I don't know that I can make that decision. I'm not involved with the rezoning or the ultimate development. I've not had any personal conversations with NC DOT about their expectations of the use of the grant fund, so I'm not sure that I'm in a position to extend that date. I think that date was chosen based on the overall development plan and the timing it would take to do the work. So I, you know, I'm not sure I'm in a position to, to address the date. But again, we believe the date is far enough out that should give appraisals time to come in, private negotiations time to occur, and then if a condemnation has to be filed, time to get that drafted and filed. And again, it's just the filing of it that would then take this provision off the table.
I'm going to come back, if I need to, to you, but I want to recognize Mr. Matthews, who wants to have a say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's no secret Garner's growing, and we've got tough decisions to make up up here, and obviously, it's not going to make everybody happy all the time. But one thing I've heard through the years of being on this council, and even in past years, you know, developers, you bring in the, the first thing is, what about the roads? What about the roads? And if the developers need to step up and pay because they're benefiting from it. Well, we've got that ideal scenario here right now. It's the very first one, to my knowledge, we've done anything like this. I don't know if any other communities are doing it or not, but if, we know we've got a traffic issue out there, and it's going to be developed, but, but Pulte Homes here, and I have no vested interest in them, I don't know anybody that works for them. I'm just a representative for the, of citizens of Garner. But they're not the bad guys here. They're stepping up to the plate, trying to do something right. Is it a perfect scenario? We've been working through this thing for months, as the attorney so eloquently went through it, and as well as the folks representing Pulte Homes here. And I think this is going to start what I hope is going to be a good trend as developers come in. By example, what we're doing here today, or can be doing here today and over the next few months, we can set a new standard for the greater Garner area. If you develop it, you're going to have to help pay for the roads, the intersections, and if you're part of the problem, you need to be part of the answer. Pulte Homes is stepping up, doing this, and I'm sitting here quietly, listening, 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 and it's, it's not a perfect scenario, but we've got to start somewhere. And if they're willing to do it, and we've got checks and balances in this, this thing here, and I believe our attorney, she's on top of it, respect her, and, you know, like I said, we can beat this thing to death all night and beat these guys to death all night any other developer that comes up here. But we need to move on this thing, and if they're willing to do a public-private partnership like we're doing here and be part of the solution and help make a dangerous intersection a lot better off, to help move traffic, and eventually, I think we'll wind up seeing that whole thing four-laned all the way through there. That, I just wanted to comment that we've, we've got to start with something good here, and it's not the most perfect thing for everybody, but we've got to make some decisions here. That traffic is not going to go away, and if we had a chance to fix it and developers be a part of it, I suggest that we move on, move on forward with this thing. So like I said, we can beat it to death all night, but I'm ready to move on forward with it. I'm just speaking for me, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Go ahead, Ms. Singleton.
Just make a suggestion in section 8.4. If Pulte would agree, that we change the date to December 31 of 2023. That rides still a whole year because we're on 51 weeks. We're not at a year here. It's only six more weeks. I'm not, it's not six months, I'm expecting it six weeks.
Done. Thank you.
Why wouldn't we extend it another year? That's to better, that's to the benefit of the town? And he's basically saying it's almost an irrelevant date, then let's extend it out as far as possible to the benefit of the town.
I will say there are other provisions in this agreement that would be affected by that, and so I think December 31 is a, is a good common ground.
What other provisions?
That no subdivision plat for Pulte shall be approved prior to acquisition or condemnation of the lands needed to do the widening. It's the sentence right before the sentence that I read to you a minute ago. So I like Mr. Singleton's suggestion.
Sure you do. Okay, I'll ask other councilmembers to comment on that since that may be part of the agreement or indicate if you agree with Mr. Singleton's recommendation for this new date added.
I would agree.
Mr. Vance?
I'll agree.
Okay. As you are the counsel, agrees that could be, should be, should be added. Thank you, Mr. King.
I do, I do want to speak because, you know, in rebuttal, partial rebuttal to Mr. Matthews, and no, it's not perfect, but that's why we're here, is to make it as good as possible. And if it's going to default in a position of betterment, it needs to fall to the betterment of the town. That is our job here. That's a part, a partnership means we assume equal risk and benefit, and we don't have an out in this. We're going to get, we'll get stuck with it. He said they need an out. We don't have one. And that gives me concern because ultimately, we may be forced to pay for it. And, I mean, I'd make another, like I said, they should be just as interested and focused on completing that road improvement as they are their own development. Like it's a sidewalk in front of their development, a curb, a gutter. And my recommendation would be too, that they don't get their hearing for a special-use permit until they get all the property acquired. Because if you can't start the road improvements, you shouldn't be able to start the development.
Counsel, will anybody else care to address Mr. Dellinger's stated concerns?
We have to remember that we're trying to make a dangerous intersection safer. There are residents in here, I'm looking at them right now, who have lived there for, who I've known most of all my life, who've lived there for, I know Mrs. Neese lived there all her life, is to make the intersection safer. Out, this out, that out, I don't care about the out, I care about saving somebody's life. Last week, both, oh, at church Sunday, both of them spoke to me and talked about, there were two accidents there last week. Another resident, who also goes to church, she lived across the street, talked to me separately from them and talked about the two accidents. She lives at the intersection of White Oak and Salt, Salt Hill. So the ultimate goal of this is to make the intersection safer. Now, Mr. Dellinger has valid concerns, I understand where he's coming from, but we need to make the road safer. Pulte pays for it, ten developers pay for it, if we have to pitch in and help pay for it, the goal is to make the road safer, period. So that's what we have to see in the big picture, is a safer road. Not nitpicking and nitpicking this and nitpicking that. Pulte obviously has, you know, they've got some skin in the game, but they also want to develop their project, which we understand also, that's part of, a part of this. So the goal is to make the intersection safer. The town's got to pay dollars into it, by God, we'll pay dollars into it as long as you save a life. All it takes is one life. Tragically, you know, many times, intersections aren't improved until there's a death. It's just a fact of life. We don't want to have one here before the end of this, based off this schedule, we're still talking the end of 2025, two years from now. Yeah. This is like Jones-Soss's Road, you know, we've been working on that two years, designing it, this four years out from being completed. It'll be six and a half years before that gets completed, to make that a safer road. So the goal is to make safer, safer roads.
I'm in complete agreement with you, Mr. Singleton. 100%, I'm in agreement. What we need to do is incentivize them to get it done as fast as possible. That's what we have the opportunity to do with this development agreement, is structured in such a way that they're saying, man, this is so important, we need to get this done as, it's as important as our development because the safety of the residents of Garner is as important as our development. That's what I'm trying to do.
I understand, but it's like the traffic circle that's going to go at the intersection of Hebron, White Oak, and Ackerman, which, golly, we thought would be open by now. Heck, we still hadn't started building that yet. And that's been, you know, that's going to be a five-to-six-year process also. If they can get this done in two-plus years, praise the Lord.
Then let, then let that burden be on them.
It is on them.
It is.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to intervene, guys. This is still part of the public hearing, and I see a member of the public who wants to make another comment, so I'm going to recognize her at this point in time.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I had a question before the debate began, and it was in reference to the timeline and the adjustment of the schedule to, I think it was the complete right-of-way and easement acquisition to December 2023. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so does that adjust the entire schedule? For everything else, does everything else slip as well?
I think there are passes in there, sir, that will overlap, that will, that should not result in a substantial delay to the construction.
So the schedule will hold the way it is?
The plan to award the roadway construction contract in January of 2024, so going through December.
So the schedule will hold as it is with the completion date currently scheduled, May 2025? Okay. Finish.
Hey, thank you. Ms. Lee, I'll hear from you again.
I'll take much less time, and I'm speaking on behalf of quite a neighborhood group, so that's another reason why I'm, I'm speaking again. It's imperative that we state to everyone on the council and listening that we 100% agree with Councilman Singleton. This is something that has always been something that's been important to the council. The council clearly halted additional developments until this was taken care of. It's something that, I mean, where I live, I pass by there at least five times a day. I was caught in the traffic on Sunday with one of the accidents. I travel with three children in my car every day, multiple times a day. I think that unfortunately, right now, we're talking about a business agreement, and I think that we may have missed or glossed over a very important reaction that just happened here in front of us. And I think that that's something that Councilmember Dellinger may be trying to get our attention to, and that is, Mr. King stood up here and he said, "We don't have any problem meeting this date." Like, it's completely realistic. The lawyer stood up here, he said, "It's completely realistic. It's literally just, we had to put something in there in case this never happens. This is not going to be a problem. This is not going to be an issue." When we asked to move it out a year, the first thing they said was, "Well, if we move it out, we can't get our plat approved." So tell me, why is it that that is where they draw the line? That's the skin in the game that Councilman Dellinger is asking you to hold them accountable to. Give them something to shoot for, to hold them accountable to the statements that they are making to us as the citizens to get this road built. Let's give them a reason to get it done in two years. Let's get them some skin in the game so that we can get these things done. They came to the town, do not forget that. They came to the town, they said we'll pay for it. That is what we're asking, is that we hold them accountable to the statements and the promises that they have made to us as a public and to the town because they came to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll recognize Ms. Mary Lee.
Thank you for your time and your consideration. I'm Mary Lee, 8345 Hebron Church Road. All of us, I would like the people here for the Buffalo Walter Project, please stand. I want you to see these citizens, that every one of these people here care about that intersection. You're acting like we don't care about these lives. We do, because most of these people standing right here, they travel that road too. I still find it interesting that this land is so, I mean, it's like holding us hostage. This, the stoplight is holding this land, us hostage. They're going to be gone from here when they, after they finish this development. All of us live here, we're going to have to live with this the rest of our lives. We're not trying to stop it, we're just asking for consideration under several things, and I think you all already know what those are. But we are affected by that light too, so please don't let us, let anybody think that these folks are here against that stoplight. We all agree, that light's been needed for a long time, but have consideration for the other part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've heard from various viewpoints, and they're all concerned. I'll go one more round with counsel, and then I'm going to get direction on whether or not we take a vote on this, where I believe, Ms. Jones, you had suggested, we may want to consider this in conjunction with the, with the next hearing before we vote. We could do that if we chose to, is that right?
That's correct. You could hold this decision until you make the decision on that, and then, but as the rezoning request is... that, and then, but as the rezoning request is, it is a condition that there be a development agreement.
Right.
Whether it's this one or another one is, is what you need to determine tonight.
Yep. So, we could go ahead and vote on that, and then...
You know, assuming that the rezoning...
Right. Okay. Anything else for you, Phil?
No, sir.
Uh, Mr. Singleton? Ms. Perry? Okay. Sure, I'll go to Mr. Vance, and then, yeah. Mr. Dellinger?
We're not going to make a decision on this right now. I mean, it's right here in front of us. Irrelevant to whatever the rezoning is, there are terms and conditions with this that we're in the middle of debating. We should make a decision, or incorporate feedback, or something.
I think the intent is to make a decision on the development agreement.
And let's continue to work towards making a decision on it.
And then go to the other manner.
I mean, that, how, we've been working, as Mr. Matthews said, we've been working on this for a long time. But let's get it done, and then we can go to the rezoning.
Well, I, I sort of think the rest of the council is ready to get it done. Did you have some other points you want to make, or, or thoughts you want to share?
I, I think my point is with, we should make a modifications and/or decision on this development agreement before we do the rezoning. That's my position.
What say you, counsel? We have the, we have the agreement for us. Ms. Jones, do you see this as an opportunity to, to make any substantive changes in the development agreement here in this meeting tonight?
Well, my understanding is there's been the one date change that would be incorporated, that's been agreed to by the developer.
Right, that's the only one I've heard, specific.
I, I made another, that they're not getting, have the hearing for their special use permit until all the land is acquired. Again, motivating them to get it done.
Well, on the initial one, I know counsel was in favor of that. My impression was that the, the recommendation you made, counsel, was not supportive of that.
I'm just making sure it was heard, and if nobody wants to do that...
Yeah, I think it was heard.
Okay.
Does counsel want to say anything else on that particular proposal? I think we've heard it before. Okay, hearing none. Okay, I think I'm, I'm going to call for a vote if counsel is ready, unless you want to take up the other matter and consider the two matters at the same time. You ready for, to, to vote on this?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're called to do. All right, I'll entertain a motion as relates to this particular item recommending adoption of Resolution 2022-2516, authorizing execution of the development agreement. Okay, a motion has been made, Councilmember Maringer, and seconded by Councilmember Singleton on the, on that particular motion. Counsel, you understand what you're voting on?
The change noted on the date.
Excuse me. Yeah, okay. The change noted on the date. Okay, if you, if you favor the motion that is before you this time, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you oppose the motion that is before you, would you vote no?
No.
Okay. The chair declares that the motion to approve this passes on a vote of four to one. So, the development agreement has been, has been approved. I'm going to declare a, at least a five, maybe 10-minute recess on this matter, and we'll come back and take up item number one, renew and, and old business. Catch your breath and come back, we'll take that up.
Okay, thank you for coming to order and we'll be back in session after the adjournment. We will now go to item number one under new and old business, which certainly has some carryover from the subject we've been discussing and I'm going to recognize Mr. Jeff Treisenberg, our planning director, for a presentation on this item.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Good evening, sir.
This is the zoning portion, coming back to you for a decision after being at the Planning Commission. Just a reminder of the general case information, this is a Tier Two request, so it is a master sketch plan plus written conditions to be going from residential two to multifamily A. Originally was, again, R-20 and a little bit of R-40 to multifamily one. The use restrictions have been listed along with architectural and amenity conditions. I will highlight those that have changed since meeting with the Planning Commission. Again, just a reminder of the site location. And here is the updated zoning map now showing the current adopted zoning. So again, mostly R-2 along Wind Road. Meadowbrook Park property is zoned R-A along with one of the parcels here had been zoned R-40. Again, R-A and R-2, the most dense that we have here is the R-4 that the high school sits on, and that was a conditional. Again, I'm just going to focus primarily on those that have changed, but just a reminder again that the residential cluster and townhouses are the two permitted uses for the proposal. In reference to condition number 21, since the Planning Commission meeting, I've had both meetings with Mr. Buddy Gutten on behalf of some of the folks in the area, and then I also had a conversation with Mr. Lee where we talked about the specifics of the fence. The fence is still proposed and we do have specifics that have been agreed to by all parties and will be incorporated into the preliminary plan at approval. But basically, it's been agreed to that for some sections it will be aluminum picket fence and in other places it will be black vinyl coated chain link. So that, I was glad that we were able to reach an agreement on that. There you see number 22, which Terry discussed at length in the previous case, and then we have these three additional conditions that came out of Planning Commission. The first one is that the developer agrees to petition NC DOT to reduce the speed limit on Wind Road to 35 miles an hour and to stripe the travel lanes on Wind Road, again pending DOT approval. The developer shall also install and maintain no construction traffic signs on Wind Road near the intersection of Hebron Church to discourage construction traffic from using Wind Road. Those signs will remain in place until the buildout of the community. And finally, the developer will agree to keep the connection to Wind Road closed with temporary barricades until such time that the town of Garner or Wake County require the connection to open. As we've discussed that previously, that is largely contingent upon that northern portion of the property, that phase being completed, at which time it will need two points of Reminder again here of the master plan, 131.2 acres, 393 total units, 278 single-family clusters and 115 townhomes at three dwelling units per acre. There is a provision in the zoning conditions to go up to 3.1, but what they're showing here in the master plan is exactly at 3.0. And so previously, when I was talking about that last condition, we're talking about everything north of here. So at this point, there is only one point of access into the remaining part of the development. At that point, Wind Road becomes the second point of access to this point, part of the Just a reminder of the lots and setbacks, won't go through that in detail. Landscaping and buffers, the tree canopy, the rule at the time of submittal was 12% to 14%. The master plan envisions at least 12% with at least 15.73 acres in preservation only. Again, that number will be added to significantly by the additional trees that are planted. There is a 30-foot perimeter buffer required for the entire development since it is a cluster. And street trees must be provided every 40 feet. Again, a reminder is with the previous cases, we will continue to evaluate compliance with the UDO requirements at the preliminary site plan or subdivision review. That includes lighting for streets and common areas, specifics related to stormwater management devices, water line placement and hydrant spacing, as well as the individual landscaping and parking requirements. All of those things will continue to be verified for UDO compliance. Planning Commission reviewed the consistency of the request. In terms of the 2018 Garner Forward Plan, they found it consistent that the site of the request is primarily designated as medium-density residential. A smaller portion in the very southeast corner was designated as low-density residential. The medium density includes single-family duplex, triplex, quadplex and townhome style residences with no less than two and a half nor more than five units per acre. The medium-density residential structures may also include auxiliary units detached from the primary houses. The low-density residential category would be mostly traditional county-approved subdivisions, anything that could be sustained on individual well and septic with less than two and a half units per acre. So that was, again, that small portion of the property in the southeast corner. The proposed use of townhomes and single-family is consistent with both low-density residential and medium-density residential recommendations and the distribution of the proposed densities are consistent with these designations from west to east being higher to lower. In terms of the transportation plan, they found that the transportation plan calls for I-40 eastbound to be four lanes and for both Hebron Church and New Bethel roads to be widened to three lanes or two-lane divided. This project will complete the widening of Hebron Church and New Bethel roads along their respective frontages, inclusive of pedestrian accommodations. With these improvements, this project can be considered consistent with the transportation plan. In terms of the Parks Rec Greenland Cultural Resources Master Plan, the site was not designated as a parkland search area. We have Meadowbrook property just to the north. But there is a greenway corridor identified along Hebron Church Road, which has been determined by staff to be most appropriate for the eastern margin of the right-of-way, again because of the, primarily because of the existence of the Meadowbrook Park property. With the inclusion of the site path, this plan may be considered consistent with the Parks Rec Master Plan. On a vote of six to zero, the Planning Commission found this request to rezone 131.2 plus or minus acres from residential two to multifamily conditional, which would be adopted as multifamily A, for the development of single-family residential dwelling units and townhomes at a maximum of 393 units at a maximum gross density of 3.1 units per acre, and that it is consistent with the future land use maps' mixed designation of medium-density and low-density residential as a proposed distribution of densities are consistent with these designations from west to east, higher to lower. So here tonight, as part of your motion, you will need to make a statement on the reasonableness of the request. And so we have given you recommendations both for finding it reasonable and unreasonable, and there are highlighted sections in your staff report that would go with each of those. But we do recommend that you do find it consistent and then just making your determination on whether or not it is reasonable. That is all that I have to present for you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Treisenberg. Council, as usual, to give you an opportunity if you have questions for Mr. Treisenberg. I'll start with Mr. Singleton.
I have multiple, and so I'll ask the first one and go around and ask the next one again. This condition 21 you spoke of, Jeff, about the fence, I know that that was a concern for Mr. and Ms. Lee, and I think it was a concern for Mr. and Ms. Cook also. So is that, is that going to address, the fence part, is that going to address the Lee's concerns and the Cook's concerns and I reckon other property owners too?
From my understanding, when I met with Mr. Lee, we talked about this portion here would be, the, says it's going to be inside, it's going to be directly behind the townhomes, so there's going to be still the buffer, that will be the aluminum picket, and from there, it will be the black vinyl coated chain link the rest of the way because it's actually behind the buffer, and so that was their preference, as was stated to me, and then they will also be, it will also be placed along the inside of this easement, per the documentation that I have.
So it'll go up here and go towards Wind Road and will it cross over, will it do all that also? I know Mr. and Ms. Cook's property is right there, to the, right to the left of that dot. Will it go further or will it just end at Wind Road?
From what I have, it was just to end at Wind Road, that Mr. Cook and the Lee's were the only ones who were, but it can go, it can go the other side. We can do that. It does?
Yes.
Okay.
It's going to the other side, okay. All right. Just wanted to get that clarified. Okay, I saw, I'll come back with the next, another one on the next round.
Thank you. Anything, Mr. Matthews?
Not this time.
Ms. Behringer.
Yes, concerns about Wind Road. I believe it's supposed to be, it's on record as being 22 feet wide, but that is not actually the case, and I have concerns about pedestrian traffic, walking up and down that road with the road being as narrow as it is and then it potentially being an access. So what plans are in the works for that?
At this point, there are not any plans that I am aware of for this roadway. I know it's been looked at. Currently, there's a ditch section on both sides and for it to meet, continue to meet the DOT requirements for the ditch section, there's apparently not enough room on the backside to fit the sidewalk without other folks' fences already being in there and potentially additional easements and construction easement requirements to do that.
Is Wind Road a town-maintained road or is it a state-maintained road?
At this time, it's a state-maintained road. It would not surprise me, though, in the long term, if that's something that, if that's a road that DOT does not probably ask to, for the town to consider taking over, but for right now, since it's serving primarily properties that are just in the ETJ, it would still remain a DOT road.
Is there any hope in asking DOT to help with some work on that road?
I'm sure we could ask. I mean, we can always ask. I just don't know the availability of funding for things like that, given the availability of funding for other projects.
Okay, Mr. Dillinger, anything for Mr. Treisenberg?
Quick question. How many subdivisions are here? How many subdivisions are there here?
In this particular project?
Yeah. I mean, this is one subdivision per UDO, correct?
It, it could be, yes. It could also be divided into phases where different folks will treat phases as individual.
But this is one subdivision per UDO, because I heard you say something interesting about the northern section being a subdivision that needed two entrances and exits, whereas the UDO in the new version, the old version simply says 75 units and then 250 for a subdivision. So if we're looking at one subdivision, the number of entry and exit points is already fulfilled even for that upper portion, right?
So our interpretation at staff level and with the, with the introduction of also the building code requirements, any, any part of a proposal where there's going to be more than 75 units that need to be in one area, need to have two points of access.
Where is that written?
Again, that's been our interpretation of the UDO, when looking at it at TRC with the building code requirements, the building code works the same way. So that's always been, that's always been the interpretation here.
You're saying that by that interpretation, you would have to open Wind Road to traffic? Interesting interpretation.
Again, that precedes me as well, so I'm...
But it's not even, I guess it's not a policy, so I mean, it's not something that is written in stone, it's open to other interpretations and considerations under certain circumstances because it's not written in black and white, correct?
It could be, yes.
Okay.
Again, I would just point out, though, that the building code is going to also come into play and have that same, that's a totally different thing that we have no control over that interpretation.
And that, the building code part is for emergency access, though. It's not actually a sort of traffic connectivity parameter. It's a pretty specific related to emergency services access, correct?
I would defer that to Mr. Beasley.
We heard from Mr. Beasley earlier. I'll go to Mr. Vance, come back to you.
Don't have any questions at this moment.
Okay.
We had our public works committee meeting, Mr. Dillinger. I asked that question and beat it around the bush also, and more of this is on building code than it was on our ordinance. Most of that was, and Mr. Beasley can explain, I know he's on, I see him on here, I don't know if he's, if he's listening or not, but that two-hour meeting we had, we started in Green Brown's Indian Drive and we moved over here because I asked, was there any way we could avoid Wind Road gates one way, this way, that way? And he said what the concerns were per the building code, but if he's available, I wish he would answer and be specific, but anyway.
Mr. Beasley, are you available? Maybe not at this time.
Good evening.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay. I, yes. Oh, I got a different backdrop. Hold on. I'll leave that off then. My backdrop was from a different team's meeting today. No, the building code is, is like we said before, is pretty specific, two access points for 100, more than 100 single-family homes. So, you know, it's not necessarily a fire access road because it's, it's an entry point. It's for emergency access, but it talks about two entrances for emergency access. You know, we talked, we discussed a little bit before, if you remember, the difference between a single tenant which has a fire access road and then emergency access, which is the different section within the fire code that says that when you have more than 100 homes, the fire official requires, it used to be two entrances for 35 homes, but the General Assembly changed it to 100, or before they made that mandatory. So in this configuration, when we've been through it, through all the TRCs, that whole upper section only had one long access point. So if something happened on that access point, those residents had no other access. So that was the reason Wind Drive came back in and was required to be connected.
And how many homes are in the upper portion? Because he said more than 75, you're saying 100.
Less than 100. Ninety-one.
So it's less than 100, so seems to not meet the building code threshold to need two entrances.
Well, it's not just the whole upper section. You know, before you could go two ways, you end up picking up a set of homes on that lower section also. But, you know, we still looked at it based on that, and I know the UDO was 75 homes. It was less stringent than the building code as far as the two exit requirement.
So what I heard was that that section is considered its own subneighborhood and therefore would be treated relative to its size with regards to how many entry and exit points. I heard it was 75, then I heard there aren't 75, there are, there are 90 up there, and then I heard, I mean, then I heard 100 is the threshold for the building code. So what I've heard is that section doesn't require two points of entry and exit, and if it is, even on the building code side, it's relative to emergency services access. That's what I heard.
Anything further, Mr. Beasley?
No, I mean, when, because I'm sure if the fire department's there tonight or police, when we all evaluated it, you know, we looked at it both from, because we have two different sections in the fire code, which is fire, not overall life safety for ambulance and EMS, but on the fire. One is the two X, two entrances, remote apart, and that's the 100-home limit now by the General Assembly. And then there's another section in it that says when the fire officials feel that life safety can't be met or need, they could require even more than two entrances. But that's where we looked at it. So from a staff perspective, based on how we looked at it, even the 10-home shortage, if you're trying to evaluate just that section, we felt that that connection was absolutely warranted from us, from a public life safety for fire, EMS and police.
Okay, thank you, sir. Did you have anything for Mr. Beasley? Sorry?
Chief, all to speak to this.
You care to make any comments on this, chief? Or if you prefer not to, that's okay.
It's up to you. I don't mind commenting. We've got some history regarding this situation in previous neighborhoods.
Perhaps so.
I didn't come here for this.
You didn't.
So just historically, we've had these conversations. If you remember, several years ago, the Swift Creek Station subdivision that was planned for 401 in the southern corridor of that area, so the, one of the concerns was the amount of homes to be built and have only one access. The railroad at that point was an issue, and we had, at that time, decided, based on, in the TRC, I believe, that 75 homes that we would recommend have two points of access. There, there's been several since then, since my time, and so just from emergency services opinion, once you get a cluster of homes, whether it's 75 or 100, the density of that, if there's a traffic accident or if there's something that we can't access, that's a large number of people that we don't have an ability to main, to get through. So it's just our concern, whether it's a public road or not, we, we prefer to have a secondary means of access to get into a homes, and we have been using 75 people up to 100 of homes to, to determine, generally that's the trigger point to look at, a secondary means of access. to, to determine, generally, that's the trigger point to look at a secondary means of access. And like I said, this, this is certainly not the first. There have been several in the last five years that we've had this conversation about it. So you've had some in the very near past regarding this issue too. So from, from my standpoint, we need to be able to access, based on density and the target, the amount of responses to a hundred homes or seventy-five, we need to be able to get in and out. And if something happens to that one artery, we can't access the rest of that homes. And that's, that's our concern. It's not political. It is purely a public safety issue.
Okay. Any other question for Mr.?
I do have a question. So is it, does that mean that the fire department is sort of agnostic with regards to the use of emergency gates? Or is there a slight preference against them? Or would you ever recommend not doing it, carte blanche?
So we, we could spend hours discussing access gates. Ms. Lee and I had a conversation at the, at the break. If a community is going to go to a gate system, there needs to be a consistent policy on the gates, a trigger point in which gates are required, how they're locked, and all these things that we currently don't have. I'll tell you, from emergency services standpoint, our total response time is a concern. If you saw the 5:30 news today, Durham has a response time issue. We all have those things. And so to, to access a gate, to determine how we enter the gate, where the gate is, who maintains those gates, that sometimes that takes some valuable time for us, depending on the incident. So my preference is that we do not use gates. But there are always extenuating circumstances where they occur. And if so, I think we, as a community, need a policy on how gates are determined and what trigger points they're on.
Thank you, Ms. Pooh. Yeah, your, Mr. Johnson was here at a previous meeting. He got called on, sort of in an unexpected way. So I appreciate you being here and making your comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and thank you, thank you, Mr. Beasley. Okay, anything else for Jeff? I'm going to explain, I think most of the public here understands, this is not a public hearing.
I've got some more questions.
Okay, let me just explain that. But I will perhaps entertain a few comments as long as they address the proposed conditions and issues that Mr. Trezenberg has covered here. We're not going to re-licitate all the other information that's already been discussed. But I recognize Mr. Singleton at this time.
Okay. I've asked Mr. Trezenberg numerous times, how can we do this without connecting to Wind Road? I've asked Mr. Beasley numerous times, Mr. Hodges. We had a public works committee, me and Mr. Vance, a lot of staff was there and gave us the ins and outs. Fire department was there, Don Johnson was there. It also came up that if this is denied tonight, that the property owner of the Walters property could still get about, I think you can have seventy-five homes on that, on that street roughly. So however many are on Wind Road now, he could build additional mount and connect to Wind Road. And there's nothing the town can do to avoid that. I mean, the town has no say over that. Is that correct?
I mean, that's his, that's his point of access right now, as things are today.
Which is required, that's required by state law. So if there was no, no other half to it, Wind Road could be connected if it's denied regardless, with fifty homes or however many homes it may be. Yeah. The question about no construction traffic, keeping people off of there, I'm going to make an assumption that the length of time before Wind Road may ever be opened would probably be two and a half, three years at the, at the earliest because of... Let's see, I saw the condition in here. Oh, heck. The condition is when the town or the county deems it appropriate that any safeguards or whatever the word was, let me find it. When Wind Road would have to be opened up after a certain time when the town or county approves it, that's correct? Now, does that mean the whole subdivision's got to be built? I mean, I don't, developer agrees to keep the connection to Wind Road closed with temporary barricades until such time the town of Garner or Wake County require the connection open.
So if this, if this part... Sorry. So at this point, we don't know exactly how they're going to phase this development. So as each phase comes in, we have to, again, review that for compliance. And a phase can be considered a subdivision as well, and then the project could stop. You just never know what's going to happen. So the way the condition is written now, whenever this part comes in, whether it's one phase or two phases, whatever, whatever phases it covers, that, that, that those roadblocks will be there until this entire section is built out.
Somebody from their guts stepped up and maybe have an extra specific question? I was just going to say, he stood up.
Yeah. Hi, my name's Rob Rudloff with Pulte, 1225 Crescent Green Drive in Cary. So just wanted to address the timeframe for, you know, you know, our build-out timeframe for the subdivision. You know, I can't say a hundred percent because of, you know, that things can change all the time, market, you know, home sales, things like that. But I think we're looking at at least a three-to-five-year build-out, you know, period for us. So, and I believe on our site plan, that's phase four, Jeff. Like, you know, we've submitted that, and that's our fourth phase and, you know, yeah.
Okay. So where, I was out there again today in front of the Cook's property, back up in your driveway, if you've got a camera, and one of them, camera was sitting there for a long time, it was me. The pavement ends before you get to the gravel, which goes to their driveway. So whenever they, if this gets approved or didn't get approved and somebody else goes there, they can connect to that road right there. It's going to be the same width. And also, the question about the twenty-two feet, Mr. and Ms. Lee provided the width every hundred feet on the road, and it was not twenty-two feet. But Mr. Beasley stated that our public works committee meeting about the state has an out on that. It doesn't have to be twenty-two. It can be nineteen or seventeen. It could be very narrow and still be allowed because it's a state road. The state's got all kinds of, they're covering their butt, and basically, what he told us. So whoever, whether it's this project or another project, somebody's got to connect all the way to where the existing pavement is, in front of the Cook's house. All right, that's all for right now.
Okay, all right. Let me see, I don't think I got to Mr. Vance down there, did I? Did you have anything? Okay. Okay, anybody else on council? All right. All right, I believe I did say, even though it's not a public hearing, if, if somebody in the audience wants to take a few minutes to address Mr. Trezenberg's proposed conditions, changes, and information that he shared, I will hear from that person now. Ms. Lee? Come on forward.
Tired of seeing me. Mary Lee, eighty-three, forty-five Hebron Church Road. Again, we're sort of coming out as being the bad guys, you know, the fire on the other side of that gate, and you can't get to them. Obviously, that's not what we want to happen. So basically, what you're saying, our lives are not as important as the lives on the other side of that gate because that road is dangerous. So if the gate does, is not going to be there, if the, if the road is going to be open, whether it's two years from now, or four, or five, it doesn't matter. It's still narrow. It's still a dangerous road. We, the road, you have to make sure the road is improved. That's just, it's, it's simple. It's, it's either that or you're going to, you're going to lose that life that you could lose at Bryan Road and Wydok. So please consider the safety. I think everybody's missing the safety of just these folks. I would say, there's not that many people live on Wind Road. My grandparents, my grand, my grandchildren live on Wind Road. I don't want anyone hurt or killed, and especially, and not these people in this, in this subdivision. There's got to be a agreement here that's for the betterment of everybody. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
Again, I won't take up too much time. But again, I'm speaking on behalf of the neighborhood and the neighbors of this area. We are coming to you, asking to, to not rezon this right now. I think there is enough doubt about what is going on with this subdivision. The questions that we've asked, we've, we've been going back and forth on this with Planning Commission multiple times, with the development agreement, which is now, you know, completely finalized. We have valid questions here tonight, and we don't, we have the luxury of time. You know, Councilman Behringer brought up about Wind Road. Just because the, the state doesn't require you to make it safe doesn't mean that we shouldn't make it safe. You know, back when this was in Planning Commission, we were told that they would reach out to the DOT. Mr. King has said they have reached out to the DOT. But then Mr. Trezenberg just said now that there's, nobody's talked to anybody about it. There's confusion about that. I think the key here is that in Garner, we have approved already in this three-and-a-half-mile radius, twenty-seven-hundred lots. The traffic study that's done for this development, it doesn't include those. It doesn't include the development that has been approved by the town, but that has not been built. It doesn't, so yes, I'm sure it's a great traffic study, but it, it, it's not accurate. It does not include future development that has already been approved, approved by the town of Garner. A gentleman that was talking up here about Barnett Farms, he reiterated the same thing, just talking about traffic. He's on a completely different part of Garner. On the way here at 647 PM 50 Highway was still backed up from past New Bethel up to almost Brineley Funeral Home, 6:45 in the afternoon. We're not saying that all development is bad. Councilman Behringer told, told me something recently. It really stuck with me. Not all things that are old are bad, and not all new things are good. And vice versa. What we're trying to do here is we're trying to ask the council to take into consideration everything that we've been approved, the density that's already in that area, not just in this tiny little picture right here. Every single school that's been approved by the town of Garner since 2017 is in that three-and-a-half-mile radius, with another one coming. That's additional traffic that may or may not be in their traffic study. That's at least two trips a day. That's school buses. School buses can't get down Wind Road right now. It's not possible. And if you connect it, I mean, are, are we worried about that safety? We, we, we should not have to pick and choose what safety we choose, we, we want to support. Councilman Singleton said something earlier when he said, he's talked just tonight. He said about this other development, he said, "I have confidence." This family, they're particular about how they develop. I am confident in how we have been building this town since the sixties. And the word that he used was slowly. We have the luxury of time. We are begging the town to listen to these citizens about this development, other developments. We want to be able to provide the quality of life of the people that are going to buy these homes. We want them to be able to get to working back in, shorter than an hour. If you go four and a half miles and it's taking you twenty minutes, that's a situation. You're going to have really upset residents, as if, you know, the people that have been showing up this year are not enough. Year-over-year tax increases to, to pay for this infrastructure, the wear and tear on the infrastructure, whether it be in the ETJ and it's the town and, and we're asking the DOT to do it, or whether it's town-maintained roads. You're, we're also missing a huge piece, which is, even with the tax increase last year, what, we took on maybe four or five more police officers? In our three-and-a-half-mile radiance, radius, when you look at, and I have a picture of it. It's tiny, but y'all have seen it a thousand times, and it's what I'm talking about. It's new residential development right here. If you look and you see in the three-and-a-half-mile radius of where this is, it's over seven thousand people that we're adding. I don't think that four police officers and a couple of firemen are going to be able to serve that community the way that we should hold the town of Garner to, the standard that we should hold, the services that we can provide our citizens. If anything, I just ask for some more time, if we need to reduce the density. If we need, the fact that that upper portion needs to have two entrances through all the Planning Commission meetings, through all of these meetings here, through the emails with the staff, first we've heard about it. I'm not the first one, that that's the first that we've heard about it. I don't feel like that's acceptable. I've spent months calling the town, emailing the town, emailing the staff, weeks in advance. I, up until today, at 2:35 PM, I did not know which UDO, Pulte, had chosen to abide by, the new one or the old one. We are trying desperately to be informed citizens. We are not against everything. We want to be informed. We're not given that opportunity by staff. You know, it's 2:30. I emailed, you know, three weeks ago to get the conditions of rezoning. I got them when they got published, which is fine, but I asked for them beforehand. 2:35 today, you know, that's not the time to be saying, oh, did you have any questions? This being up for vote when we have literally been talking about this for six months? I don't feel like that's acceptable. We're doing everything that we can to partner with the town and to make it a better place. But we can't even be informed because we can't get anybody to answer the phone, at the staff. We can't get anybody to email us. We're having to go in person to sit down and talk with somebody, to even get answers to their questions. I've emailed the head of every department in the last few months. I've called almost every single staff person in the Planning Department. Do you know the only person that's responded to my emails and answered my phone call? Ms. Terry Jones, town attorney. I ask that you take that seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. All right. If we're going to keep it short and keep it to the presentation of Mr. Trezenberg, I think we're deviating from that, so I'll hear from you, sir.
All right. You know me, Joe Cook from 2524 Wind Road. On behalf of residents of Wind Road, I, I'd like to say that I'm not sure we should even be at this meeting. The reason I say that is because it would have been possible that the Planning Council would have had another look at this development. At the Planning Council meeting, we had told the council that we had concerns about pedestrian safety. And I could tell by the questions they were asking that they also had concerns. Near the end of the meeting, Christopher Johnson, the town engineer, came to the podium to clear up some things. He said that Wind Road was twenty-two feet wide and as wide as many roads in Garner if it would have eleven-foot-wide lanes. That was incorrect information. You know, it's been measured every hundred feet, and it's, you know, averages nineteen feet, seven inches. He also stated that the road served ten homes and it serves fifteen. After Mr. Johnson's incorrect statements, the Planning Commission looked relieved, and they approved the project to move forward. Since he is the town engineer, he's considered an expert. I don't think this was fair, and no one asked him to speak. I don't know how the vote would have gone, but it's disappointing to have the town employee take the side of the builders and developers when they should be impartial. And, you know, to be honest with you, the whole feeling of this with, was that this has been forced down Wind Road, and I don't know why. I can take a pencil. I could draw you another road on that right now, and, and they can have two entrances. Now that I got that off my chest, I want to explain the concerns we have. Wind Road is currently a dead-end road. Wind Road does not connect to the Walters property. The asphalt ends before the Walters property. Wind Road is narrow and windy. Wind Road has ditches on both sides, and in places that are quite steep. Wind Road is adjacent to a school. Students are going to walk down that road, and they're going to have to jump in the ditch to, to keep from getting hit. The subdivision is built, it'll add a substantial amount of traffic. Right now, we're using it for biking, walking, et cetera. It's eighteen feet, ten inches at its narrowest point, and that'll give you a nine-foot, five-inch lane on each side. You know, we already went over to UDO, you know, now the UDO has changed, that we have to have extra entrances. You know, it's like a moving target. Every time we bring something up that we find in the UDO that says it's not needed, then they find something else. Anything I find in the UDO doesn't count, and anything they have in the UDO is important. You know, right now, it's zoned R20, so it's a big jump from R20 to go to MF1. You know, when I moved into my house, I figured the land next to me, even if it was developed, I wouldn't have that many homes. Now they're asking for MF1, which goes from two houses per acre to nine houses per acre. And I don't want to be MFed. This is the last rural land in Garner with only two ways in and out, and we're being smothered by this uncontrolled growth. Counsel, I'm begging you to think this over. Once you vote yes, it can't be undone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I think we're, we've heard from enough people now. I'm going to turn back to the council unless you want to hear from others. It's time to move on the issue before you, here at this time, if you're ready.
I have a question.
Yeah, I'll hear from...
They seem to be rushing through the end of the meeting.
Comment, questions?
I want to know if staff has a response to what was said. I think that's a huge concern as a resident and council person that the people, as they prepare to advocate for themselves and get information, don't seem to be getting, feeling like... feeling like there's cooperation or getting, you know, information and, and responsiveness. I'm sure Pulte calls up on the phone. I didn't hear, are you, do y'all have any trouble getting in touch with the town? I didn't. So I, it's, it's a, it's concerning to me.
Uh, Mr. Dellinger, I'm going to take exception to what you're saying right now. The, the implication is that our town staff, uh, is, is overtly showing favoritism. I'm in my office most days, I'm around these folks. They're not perfect, but for you to sit there as a council member and suggest that, you know, they're always going to be favorable to.
I'm asking them to respond.
I'm just asking you to show a little respect to our staff, okay?
I'm asking them to respond.
Okay. I think they've already responded. I don't think it's necessary for them to respond at this time, okay? You can see them at other times, you can call them, you can go by their office, you have that access anytime you want to. Thanks, sir. Mr. Vance, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Any other council members have anything? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just would like to repeat, I, I have concerns about the safety of Wind Road. I understand the need for that to be an access point based on the development. To say that nothing can be done, it doesn't work for me. Uh, I don't know what we have to do. I know that, um, that talking to NC DOT is a chore, um, but we can do it. And I think we need to, we need to come up with a plan that gets us some help for Wind Road. It's, I've driven down it, it's too narrow. Um, you know, they're, they make a point about a school bus can't get down the road, so you're going to have stu- high school students. Whenever they built South Garner High School, and we were talking about having a stoplight or some kind of traffic calming at Hebrew Church Road and White Oak Road, um, I said in one of those meetings, the, uh, the shortest distance between a hungry high school student and food is a straight line, and they would be driving straight down White Oak Road to White Oak to get something to eat. And we know that that's true whether we want to admit it or not. Now, it was two or three years before we had students at Southeast, South Corner High School who could drive, but we know that it's a traffic problem. I really would like to, uh, to see us work together to partner, whatever we have to do, to work with DOT to improve Wind Road so that it is a safe road to travel up and down, rather than one you have to be scared to travel up and down.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Dellinger, I guess I owe you an apology. Didn't mean to, uh, uh, overreact, but, um, criticism on staff in, in a variety of ways is a very sensitive topic. And I think we need to circumspect in when and how we do that.
I was only giving them an opportunity to respond publicly to.
Sure.
What had been brought to us.
I understand.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, uh, Wind Road, I've driven it to you. I agree with Councilman Behringer, it is very narrow. It's, it's anything we can do far as the council and again, we're working to draw attention this with the DOT collectively, working together that we could get a focus on Wind Road because what's coming in down there. It's obviously, something's need to be done. What can we do as a council as well as working with the developers and development community to draw attention to this and maybe speed things up a little bit on getting something done on that road? Granted, I know it could be two or three years before that phase is done. I understand that and, and it could be within that timeline, but, um, obviously the problem won't go away, so we need to do something to, to fix that. So is there something we could do, work out together? All parties concerned.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a suggestion. Um, Joey Hopkins used to be our district engineer. He is no longer district engineer because he's very good at his job and he was promoted. But he hears us and I would be happy as a council member to call him and ask him for help. Uh, we've gotten help from him in the past. It hasn't always been immediate, but we have gotten help. So there is, there is a solution. We cannot say, "No, that can't be done." There is a solution.
I think it's transferred districts or something, I believe, I'd heard through campus.
He's above district engineers now, but I still have his phone number.
Yeah, okay, good.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Chief Poole's, um, recommendation that we look at a gate policy, um, maybe in addition to the stubs road policy, but doing sort of an analysis of what the options are and which ones least impede, um, emergency services time and, like I said, we don't want 1,000 gates around Garner, but if there's certain circumstances in which it, the opening creates more danger, then it's going to prevent. I think that's really sort of what we're talking about. It might be worth us looking at a policy with regards to gates, um, and measuring some of these things because it's, it's going to, it keeps coming up. So I think if, that'd be a reasonable thing to do, I think.
I agree because it's not going to go away.
And I had understood maybe the public works committee that you and Mr. Singleton are on had, had already had some conversation, or is that Elmo?
We, we did discuss Wind Road situation and because it is on a state road and the access to the, uh, to the future development, we, we will not be able to gate that one, gate that because it's on a state road. We don't own the road, so we don't have control of the road.
Okay, that, I mean, that was my general understanding. Comes from the committee.
You could put the gate in, in the new subdivision, so people can't come out.
Sir, if you want to speak, we'll have.
No, he, he's, I'll ask this question. I know what Mr. Cook's asking. Mr. Beasley, I think, I don't, I can't remember when we discussed this in the, uh, public works committee, uh, in regards to if a gate was put in, it cannot be put in on the existing part of Wind Road. It would have to be put in on what I'm assuming is going to be, they'll become town streets, I'm assuming. They're not going to be private streets. Can you answer that, Mr. Beasley?
Yes, sir. The state itself doesn't allow gates. Um, that was the reason we had to take over a portion of the property. And really it's traffic arms. Gates is still, gates is the worst thing you could ever have, but traffic control arms, um, you know, we did them at the school, but they were for limited hours. Um, and then they were open the rest of the day and night and during rush hour. Um, it was only for the wind to school. That's the only one we've had in Garner that was on a town street. We have no other gates or access points on anything that's public. Um, it's typically, you know, really frowned upon, um, as Chief Poole mentioned too, just the amount of time it takes, you know, if you have to get out of a vehicle. But, I mean, we'll be happy to meet with the group and look at policies and see if there's any policies in the state. Um, there might be one somewhere out there, but I just don't see limited access points on any public streets through my travels. And I, it hasn't, none came up with our subcommittees at the state level through the office state fire marshal. So, you know, we'll, we'll be happy to do whatever direction the council gives us because that's what we do all the time.
And so gated communities, which are across the state, different places, I'm making the assumption, I think I asked this question at public works, gated communities are usually going into private streets.
Correct. Um, because you can't have power bill funds and limit non-public onto private streets.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Did I answer your question? Great.
Yes.
All right. Um, well, council, are you ready to decide one way or the other on this particular issue? Um, you're asked to consider motion to approve CZ MP 2112 and adopt ordinance 20225157. That is the issue before us at this time. I will ask council if you are, are ready to make a motion.
Mayor, can we add some conditions from the council if we make a motion to approve?
Uh, I'll defer to Ms. Jones.
At this stage, this is a, a rezoning, so the, the developer would have to consent to those conditions. There might be an opportunity during the special use permit to add conditions based on those factors in the UDO.
In fact, would that be a better time, I would think?
Not knowing the added conditions, I would assume so, yeah.
What, what conditions are you?
Conversations with NC DOT about Wind Road.
Anybody else have a question? Okay, uh, council, I can't, um, can't make the, the motion. I need some direction from council as to how you want to move on this.
First, may I move that the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment, request with the adopted land use plans detailed in section six of the staff's report as our own, and I further move that the town council adopt ordinance number 20225157 approving rezoning CZ MP 2112 as request is reasonable and a public interest because it will likely be of overall design that keeps with the town's character and improves the property values, allow, encourage shared use and mixed use developments, and create better neighborhood appearance by re, reloading driveways and using alleys, promoting walking in front of homes and allowing trash removal to be kept out of sight.
Okay, Mr. Vance, thank you. There's a motion before the council at this time, rightfully so. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Singleton.
Do you have a?
Yeah. Further discussion?
Potential condition that the developer may or may not agree to. Would the developer be willing to reduce the number of units below 75 for that upper portion and reconfigure and add, and add some units down there? You could maintain your tree preservation numbers by reducing the number and you could get more units down in the southern portion. I think the residents would really appreciate that because it would reduce that threshold for Wind Road and that second connection.
My name is Chris Rowley. I work for Pulte Homes. I'm the vice president of land development. Address is 1225 Crescent Green Drive, 27511. That's not a scenario that we have evaluated, so I can't speak to that this evening. What I would tell you is, um, what I committed to the neighbors, which was that we would be in full support of not having this access. And so if there was a condition that wanted to be imposed on us to put up a gate, we would gladly pay for that. If there was a condition where the connection that we would make would be private, so we could put up a gate, we would pay for that. If there was a condition where you wanted to make it some sort of a grid paver so that it was clearly a fire department access, which we have done in other places in Garner, we would gladly do that. So we're open to all those, um, commonly used means of emergency access without it being complete public access.
Would, would you be willing to in, include that as a condition for that block off of Wid Road and as, since that's the phase four of your development, if those aren't found to be acceptable or legal, would you then consider reducing the number to 75?
The number that I heard this evening was 100 under the building code, and we've already met that threshold. So we have a lot of commitments that we've made with this project, um, including just over the past week, we met with the neighbors and we committed to installing close to, um, over a quarter million dollars worth of fences, and we've communicated that to staff. And the neighbors made some commitments to us on what they wouldn't, wouldn't do in response to that. And, um, so, so, you know, we've not evaluated a lesser density and we've already taken on some considerable additional cost with this project, which we're excited to do. But reducing the density probably would not line up with that. But we are very open to other options that would limit the connection.
Any other questions for this gentleman, please, there? Thanks, sir. Any other council members, uh, care to comment?
I'd, uh, as a comment here, you know, I know it's a zoning issue now, but what's going to come back to us later is where we'll have the, I guess, the meat to get into this thing and requirements. So I'm just saying, I, I just want to make sure we have that conversation when that comes back to us, if we pass this zoning tonight and if we do that. And rest assured, I'll, I was sure that Ms. Behringer will take that to, to, to the hilt, whatever it takes. So, so, so that was, that's not going to go away.
Council, I'm going to call for, for a vote. The motion is properly before you to, to approve CZ MP 2112 by adopting ordinance 20225157. Motion's been made and properly seconded. If you, uh, if you favor that motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed to the motion, would you vote no?
No.
Okay. Chair declares that the motion passes, uh, a vote of four to one. Okay, uh, that concludes, uh, that section of the agenda.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I believe, Mr. Trezenberg, or, uh, the CUP on this is coming back to us in December, correct? Okay. So if we're going to, uh, look at a policy or a change or a gate road, armed guard, whatever, we need to have this stuff, have our deduction right before we meet in December. And, and I'm, I'm not saying that the staff, I mean, you know, we need to, to talk and figure out what we're dealing with and see, and the Pultes all offer what they've had to say, so we're going to have to get some more specifics, I reckon, from staff. I mean, the public works, we met and we heard different things. We'll just have to figure out what we can do.
Okay.
We'll just want to let, let all of us know that is coming back to us soon.
Which meeting in December will we be seeing this again?
Projected for the first meeting.
The first meeting, okay.
Have they had their requisite two public meetings with the public?
I'm not sure we.
I'll ask later.
Development meetings, subdivision, or?
You mean the neighborhood meetings?
Neighborhood meetings, yeah.
I understand, as they probably had several.
Okay, I know, um, many of you are, are anxious to, um, to be able to leave and go to your homes. Um, I want to just observe that, um, these, uh, these meetings, uh, are not always comfortable for all of us, including the people sitting up here. And sometimes the decisions we make, um, are easy, sometimes they're difficult. This one has been a very difficult one, at least. That's my observation. I appreciate council's, uh, concern and debate. I know that all of you out there have your own strong views on the matter. Ultimately, the council's called upon to take some action. That's what they've done this evening, but that's not the end of this discussion. There will be further talk about the, uh, matter as it comes back to us, and there'll be another day to, to, to talk about those things. I want to thank you all for, um, your decorum. When emotions get high, it's easy to, um, sometimes speak out of turn, as perhaps I did a little earlier. Um, but through it all, um, I'm sure your council will continue to work hard to try to get it right as much as they can, when they can. And so I want to thank the council as well. With that, if you'd like to leave, we're not finished yet. We still have some other business to do. If you want to stick around, that's fine, but, uh, we will understand and, uh, dismiss any of you who want to leave at this time. Mr. Manager, do you think you can, are you ready to go ahead with your report? Excuse me, but, yeah, do we have any committee reports at this time from anybody? I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think there's any committee reports. We're going to start with the, um, the talk of the town.
Excuse me, okay.
And Ms. Miller is going to go through that with you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Due to the time, I'm just going to briefly, um, review with you the November Talk of the Town report, just highlighting one of the specific updates that I just wanted, uh, council to be aware of. Um, we have been notified that we have been awarded the distinguished budget presentation award for our budget as of July 1st, 2022 by the Government Finance Officers Association. And I just wanted to share this with the council. This year's award was particularly more challenging due to the new award criteria requirements and wanted to publicly thank the budget team, in particular, Mari Howe, who helped coordinate that budget submission for us. So just wanted to highlight that for you. In addition to updates on a few council items and requests, we also have our monthly and. we also have our monthly analytics from the Garner Info App, and that's on page two. For the last 30 days or so, we've had about 43 requests. Of those 43 requests, about 93% are either completed or in progress. And you'll see the chart on the left gives you an indication of the type of requests we're seeing and the seasonality of those type of requests. So I realize this is brief this evening, but I realize the evening is running long. Happy to answer any questions the Council may have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Miller on the report? None, okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the other report where you see Public Safety Report, I know Mr. Councilmember Matthews had asked about staffing levels in Public Safety, Police and Fire. And so we were not able to get to that at our last meeting. So I think they're just going to give a kind of a brief overview of the current status and situation of their staffing levels, recruitment, and maybe some retention discussion. So if you want to have them come... Whoever wants to go first.
Who are we hearing from first? I recognize Chief Poole and our Police Chief, Roy Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. So Councilmember Matthews reached out a few weeks ago asking, I think there was an article in WRL regarding staffing and retention of public safety. I'm not sure if you saw it tonight, but at the 5:30 news, there was one regarding Durham, the Durham Fire Department, Police Department, which it actually drew up a point. So I think a lot of times we're talking about open positions and we go down that road of attrition and retention. But there's also another thing of increased growth. So several hours tonight, the town is growing, and it's difficult to navigate that through. But upon your decisions, then public safety is left to try to serve these people. And so one of our concerns is, and it's generally in the fire service, increase of call demand rises 3% to 5% each year. Last year, ours was 12. And so this morning, we did a data check. So the call volume from where we were last year versus this year, we broke last year's total call volume two weeks ago. So everything that we run from two weeks ago to now, to the end of the year, will be on top of what we ran last year. And we run approximately 160 calls a week. So where we were at 6,000 calls last year, we may broach 7,000 calls this year. And so the more these developments come, the more growth we have. And so, and I'm here to speak on the retention of our department, but also to think about as we are growing, our demand certainly engrows, and I know Chief Smith can attest to that as well. Regarding the staffing of the Fire Department, we've been very fortunate. So we have lost some firefighters this year to Raleigh had a lateral hiring process where the Raleigh Fire Department offered an elevated salary and a signing bonus to fully certified firefighters because of their staffing shortage. So we lost two firefighters this year to that campaign. And so generally for us, attrition is fairly low. We have a young department. But incentives like this put a challenge for us as well. And then, and I will say, and Councilmember Singleton has said this for years, that a pay study, you're always catching up. So you do a pay study, and then other municipalities do, and you're constantly doing this. Well, right now, as you know, we're here. And so the Garner Fire Department is the lowest-paid Fire Department in Wake County because Wake County implemented a pay-in-class study at the beginning of the fiscal year. So as of right now, we are here, and we know the town is doing a pay study, and we'll hopefully do that again. But we're at the low point in that wave, if you will. And so that does create... The two firefighters that left, I would say that that had some bearing on it based on the salary difference. But we are fortunate for the Garner Fire Department to not have hiring shortages like some others. But ours, to be the amount of FTEs we have, two or three people leaving certainly is difficult. We have 15 firefighters in the academy in preparation for the opening of Station 5. I have lost two of those through the academy, so we'll have to do a hiring process at the end of that to backfill any vacant positions. So I just wanted, a couple highlights from us is, A, the increased call demand, and especially the more development that we approve. B, the retention incentives of other agencies and our request for the necessity of the town pay study to try to catch us up. So we go here again. And so I'll be glad to answer any other questions you've got regarding the Fire Department.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. Yeah, questions for Mr. Poole? I'll start down here.
No questions?
Okay, just telling you. Behringer, none? Okay, here.
Leapfrog all the time. We're climbing the ladder.
Like the Fire Department does, we're climbing ladders constantly.
Just a comment, being a former fireman, a lot of times I go by and visit with our chiefs and police to see where we're at. And Chief Poole in his office got a very nice LED TV screen. And while he's sitting there, he can monitor every call that's going out, where they went, how long they've been on location, what the call's about. And while I was there, there was like four first responder trucks out. I said, "What's the deal?" And I said, "Where's the ambulance?" He says, "They've been there close to an hour waiting for an ambulance." I said, "What happens if we got a structured fire?" And which created more conversation. So I understand that a lot of this is the Wake County EMS service, but the strain it puts on us as a town, when we've got a fire engine and a crew setting at Lowe's Foods there, and they've been there an hour waiting on EMS, and they cannot leave once they're on that call. Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir. Once we initiate patient care... So historically, when we respond to a first responder call or medical call, the intent is we can arrive before EMS and do some life-saving efforts, gather patient information. Once EMS arrives, in the past, we have the ability, once they clear us, we can go and take another call. But with EMS struggling with their staffing, so we're... Once we initiate patient care, we can't leave the patient. So we have to assume that role until EMS arrives on scene. And those on-scene times have been extremely delayed in the past 12 to 24 months.
So that created a big concern for me, and I don't know what we can do. It's a Wake County EMS situation, but it's affecting our public safety here. And that was the concern I had, because you guys are doing your job. And but Wake County, I know they graduated a few about a week ago, but there's still a big shortage.
You know, we're looking at, you know, we're collecting data on our on-scene time. So how long are we remaining on scene to a call than we were 12 months ago? And it's increased dramatically. And so we're hoping the recruit academy that EMS has graduated will help with that. But it's an ongoing shortage, and there's multiple factors. So there are more people, the population's aging, the medical calls increase every year. And then EMS is a staffing issue, a severe staffing issue. And it's not just Wake County EMS, it's EMS in general. But you are correct, once we initiate patient care, we cannot leave. And that is something that we're certainly dealing with. So we look at a weekly report, so mutual aid. We look at how many times we require mutual aid versus we give mutual aid. And we require, Garner requires mutual aid more than any other department in Wake County. We require up to 30 times. And so we're tracking what departments are coming and why. And this is primarily why it's a reliability issue, that we're on a medical call for extended period of time, and we're requiring another department to come in and assist us.
Like Knightdale or Fairview or somebody like that?
Yeah, so Raleigh is our number-one mutual aid partner. So they have, when we track this weekly, so typically Raleigh will respond just based on proximity and then some other of the nonprofit departments. But we require mutual aid almost four times more than what we receive, we give mutual aid.
And the other item, if I may, Mr. Mayor, is the dealing with the salary. I know we're doing the pay study and what have you, and what is our timeline on that before we're going to get the end result? You know, my concern is, you know, we don't want to lose good people because you're going to have to replace them. And somewhere, somewhere we're going to have to ante up to get good people. I'd rather do it keeping them rather than losing them, have to hire somebody else. That's just my thought.
We had a discussion about that today, and Ms. Miller's over HR, so she can give you an update on that.
Yes, so the consultant is still collecting and finalizing the information and data. So we hope to have a draft report early next year to take a look at. And then from that, we'll look at the recommendations and come up with some strategies for what's been recommended for, through the pay-in-class study with a target of looking at some level of implementation next fiscal year. So that's the timeline. We started this process actually back in the June timeframe as far as meeting with departments and staff, doing the, completing the questionnaires, completing the interviews, and then doing the data collection as well.
I mean, we just implemented the last one two years, two budget years ago. So this one's turned a whole lot quicker than that one because that one took forever. I mean, we hadn't done a budget study, as you remember, for several years.
Right.
We kind of caught up with that one. But this one will help us again. But I mean, this is, we're turning it over a whole lot faster than we did before. We did the first one, that was before you're here, Ms. Miller. This is turning around pretty quick compared to previously.
Part of the time lag is we have to get a lot of information from a lot of other entities, and that doesn't always happen quickly, so that's...
Can we compare, just my edification, and I appreciate y'all sharing this. So Lieutenant on the Fire Department, how Garner's paying versus, say, Raleigh or Knightdale or Holly Springs?
Yes, yes, we have sort of comparable communities, and we have a list that we all agree to. We worked with, the department had leadership on that list for comparison, and that was the list we asked the consultant to reach out and get the data for comparison stake for the pay-in-class study.
Obviously, the quicker the better.
And some towns and cities are more cooperative than others.
Well, and...
I was going to say, once we get the data, then we have to figure out how to fund it. So it's not likely going to be a small number, so...
Well, we can't afford to lose good emergency personnel, fire, and police. So I think we need to make sure this is a priority. So whatever we've got to do to bump that, I think it'd be a good thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll yield back the rest of my time.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. I would observe we can't, we don't want to afford to lose any of our staff, the early on board. But, yeah, appreciate the information there, Chief.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. The other chief or the chief of police?
Good evening. I just want to reiterate what Chief Poole talked about when, you know, we're talking about the rate of growth that we're experiencing within the community and the implications that that has on public safety with regards to, you know, not only increased area. You know, we're looking at property now at 401 and 1010 in Auburn, Knightdale, and Rock Quarry. That's an extensive response time. And so we're looking at growth, we're talking about traffic. But I think we're also missing too sometimes the impact, the unintended consequences of growth and the impact that it has on the crime rate. So, you know, and then resources and staffing. We have a tremendous police department, and we pride ourselves on community engagement and being proactive. But as we continue to grow, when we continue to see a strain on those resources, it makes us more reactive and less proactive, which ultimately impacts our quality of service. And that's something that we don't want to see degrade. So I would just, you know, echo that, just to be mindful of the implications on public safety, not only for police, but also for fire. As far as our staffing, we have been very fortunate over the last year or so that we have been able to hire quality candidates. But we are, like other agencies, we're starting to see the pinch in the recruitment area. One of the issues that we are seeing now is with regards to the pay studies. A lot of the other municipalities have implemented their studies with the beginning of the fiscal year. And so over the last two processes, we have seen a decline in our applications. Recently just hired an applicant. It was the final applicant that was a viable candidate in our next-to-the-last application process that we went through. We currently have 74 allocated positions, and we have two vacancies. So we're still sitting fairly well with regards to that. But we're also trying to look ahead and hire for two vacancies or two retirements that are coming after the first of the year. This past application process we had, we had over 1,255 views on NeoGov. We had 11 applications and only four viable candidates. And upon our initial review of those four final candidates, we had zero viable candidates. They were eliminated from the process for various reasons. So we've opened up another process this past Friday. We've had over 450 views and three applications so far. So we're starting to see a significant decline even with including a hiring incentive. So I know that our staff have indicated that they are actively being recruited from other agencies who are also in a pinch. And so it's, we all compete from the same pool of applicants. And so it's important for us to remain competitive, not only with salary, but benefits to make sure that we retain those personnel. So any questions for me?
Council, questions for the chief? Thank you very much. Those are challenges, and they aren't easily overcome. I know you're working on it, and I know the senior staff is working on it too. And I think the commitment is to continue getting you to a better, to a better point.
Just one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Because you have two issues, which is the growth in the hiring and then the replacing if they leave. So on the retention side, is there anything that can be done more immediately? Because again, if you're digging the hole while you're still trying to fill the hole, it becomes, it can get out of control pretty quickly.
So for us, I mean, we have to take into consideration pay is a big piece of it. But, you know, you have to, your culture and your atmosphere and your work environment's important too. So we've been focusing internally on the back part of what we can control. So I think we're in a good spot right now with regards to morale. I think it's one of, been the highest that it's been in a while for various reasons. So we're continuing to focus on that and just encourage folks to be patient. They're anxious, you know, they see what's going on at other municipalities. They go to schools, they go to trainings, they talk. And like I said, some of them, even at the supervisory level, are being actively recruited for lateral transfers. So that would be significant for us to lose those qualified, just seasoned, experienced officers because not only when you lose the staff, you lose that knowledge and experience. And it's much more costly on the back end to have to replace that with it either being higher salary or additional training. So just being patient right now to see what comes out of the pay study.
Anything else for the chief?
Just a closing comment, and that's really the primary reason I wanted the chiefs to come, both of them, come give us all an update because I think we need to keep it on our radar big time. And like both of them said, we're growing, and the pool is very competitive out there right now. And come budget time, we might as well be prepared. We're going to have to do some things. And so I appreciate the update on both of y'all, and I just want to share that with the council.
I have a question about the pay study. Is it something that has to all be done for all the positions and then rolled out at once? Or can certain ones be prioritized and sort of do tranches of, you know, analyze these first and then move along? Or is...
Well, I think we'll have to look at the magnitude and figure out the best way to approach it. I mean, there can be options, I guess. But what I would add is there's certainly challenges in public safety. And, you know, they do get a lot of attention, you know, typically can read about that in the newspaper. But, you know, a lot of these, some of these issues, not all of them, but some of these issues are, all of our departments are facing the same thing. Pay, compression, starting salaries is an issue in every department. I mean, the market is just, it's just, I don't want to say it's out of control, but it's crazy.
And I'll mention, what we did at one time was we did a third of positions every year. But the problem with that is, when you did the third, let's say you did police and fire in the first year, by the time you got into implement it, it was either four or five years after you did it, and the gap was too big. And that's how we got so far behind.
Now we do all, we do all 100%. And this year, we're even doing supplemental. But, I mean, there's different options. I mean, whenever you, you know, separate them like that, you know, you always got to think about equity and, you know, priorities and which department gets funded first, and it could create tension. So we really need to be strategic about how we fund it. And, you know, is it better if everybody gets a little or some get a lot this year and others get a lot the next year? It's something we'd have to look at.
You know, it's, as a follow-up on that, as you stay in the army, when everything's going down, you want the blue lights and you want the red lights there, and you want them right then. Not that everybody else's job is not as important, but at 3:00 in the morning, somebody's breaking into your house, you want the police department there. I agree with Councilman Dillinger, and we'll shock him on this, and we agree on this one, that we need to prioritize our emergency services. That needs to be moved to the top of the heap, not that everybody else is not equally important. I'm not downplaying that. But these guys, they're lifesavers, they put out the fires, they put their life on the line. And I think those two departments need to rise to the top, however we want to do that. And equity is nice and sweet, but when somebody breaks in the house, ain't there such thing as equity?
Mr. Matthews?
I understand that, but when you get somebody saying the phone's not being answered in some department, then, you know...
But to piggyback on what Mr. Matthews is saying, one of the things you have to be very protective of is culture, like you're saying. very protect, be very protective of is culture, like you're saying. And it doesn't take but losing a sort of core group of folks to go, and you lose that culture and it starts to whittle away. And so you, you can't take that for granted. And you brought it up, but you don't want that happening with the police, that I called, they didn't show up. Now, it's one thing if planning to pick up the phone, it's another if it takes fire 10 minutes to get out there, or a bad attitude, police officer finds their way into the department and something bad happens. We don't have that problem right now, because it's a slippery slope once it starts. And we're already at the point where that critical mass, it's very difficult to maintain culture. I'm sure, it's just, it, it's really hard when you're bringing in a lot of people and, you know, so, like I said, that there are priorities that the people expect. And I think, for me personally, just even being on council, one thing was that public safety element and making sure the town is safe for everybody. So.
But I'll point this out to Mr. Matthews, when we had a couple of employees leave back-to-back, Mr. Solins left, our IT guy left back-to-back, you're the one on the email that says, "What's going on? How come we're losing these people?" So you can't, you can't say it for one and not say it for the other, it's because they're being, I mean, go from one town to the other. I mean, Ms. Miller came here from Durham County, she worked somewhere for many years, and chose to come here to Garner. If I'm not mistaken, Chief Smith, you've hired several people have come here from Raleigh in the past year, have moved or made lateral moves or whatever they've done. You have gained some Raleigh police, former Raleigh police officers that are now Garner police officers?
We have. We have, we've gained several from Raleigh, and we've had a couple from a couple other agencies as well. But we've been very fortunate, we've lost five this year, but we've been very fortunate that our folks aren't leaving to go to other departments. They're leaving to go to private sector for more money, or different opportunities, or they're moving out of state. So we've been very fortunate where some of our counterparts have not.
So it's, I mean, I was reading a report, Matt, when you were talking, I think Durham's got a 21% vacancy on police or fire, one of the two of them. But you're right, I was reading, and in response times were, you know more about the times than what I had. But, I mean, it was pretty significant vacancy. I know Raleigh's short quite a bit. I believe this EMS class was the largest they've ever had, 38 or something. But then again, how many have they lost since they've trained all them? Two, three, four, five? I don't know. So I got the feeling, reading one of the articles, that they need to have classes that big back-to-back-to-back just to try to catch up.
I think Raleigh's down 100 firemen right now.
And 911 call centers are also still struggling, correct? Yeah. I mean, let's be honest, I mean, they're having a hard time keeping bus drivers a go triangle. I mean, they've had to cancel routes. I mean, just for that, that's not public safety, but I'm just saying, they're having a hard time. Look at Chapel Hill, Carboro Schools.
School buses are canceling routes in the middle of the day.
You know, they got the darn teachers driving.
After the kids get to school, they say, "Well, we don't have enough for this route and that route."
It's a challenge, so, yes, I think we all, all recognize the fact of prioritizing public safety, but we have to look at all the departments also.
Well, I agree. Just public safety needs to be kind of up here.
Thank y'all for your information.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Get out of here and go home.
Yes.
All right, we now have...
Three more things.
Go ahead, y'all.
Yeah, I'll be real quick. So we got our second annual holiday block party on the grounds of the Garner Recreation Center on Saturday, December the 3rd, and that'll be from 2:00 to 4:00. There'll be kids, crafts and food, trucks, games, music, rides. And we got the Garner Express mini train coming back. That was a big hit last year. Of course, Santa will make an appearance and be available for photos. And then subsequent to that, there'll be a citizen organized parade to follow at 4:30, and then we'll have our annual tree lighting. So just a series of events right there, all in downtown area.
Week. In just about a week.
Yeah, just about a week, yeah.
Not long.
Yep, hopefully the weather's gonna cooperate and everything. The other thing I had is early voting. The Board of Elections asking if the council wants to do early voting in 2023, so next November, I guess. And we always done it, but I'm just asking, just to, before we seek, before we fill out the necessary paperwork, I just want to make sure that's something you want to continue to do.
I think once you start it, it's hard to take it away.
We typically do it when there's municipal election here in Garner, Garner seats open. And of course, there is a cost, and it depends on how many other municipalities participate, and they divide the cost up, so.
Loosely connected to that, there's still some signs on Garner Road showing where to go vote. So they need to come down.
Okay. Yeah, we could probably remove those, so yes.
I know where Kathy Berninger's sign is.
No, you don't. Oh, well, is it in your garage?
It was actually one, yeah, I found some junk behind some stuff, I chunked it up, if you didn't mind. It's in pretty bad shape.
You just said junk.
I just, I said, I chunked it. Junk, junk, I chunked it. That and the others we picked up and, so, yes.
Other thing is, Catty Road groundbreaking next week, Catty Road Fire Station, number, Fire Station Five. So that's November 29th, which is next Tuesday at 10:30. We'll have that groundbreaking for that station, and we'll have some Wake County folks out there with us.
I believe you're offering some pooling of rides out to there, is that right? Somebody was?
Yes, because of the limited parking, we are gonna try to carpool as much as we can, leave from here. At a reasonable time, I guess, 9:45 or something, maybe. Somewhere around there.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. I recognize the attorney.
So just briefly, I wanted to let you all know that the fall legal intern, Jamar Wilson, today was his last day. He unfortunately had some assignments he had to turn in, so he couldn't be with us tonight. But I just wanted to publicly thank him for his assistance. And I've now had two law students who have worked on that developer agreement with me that provided some assistance. But, you know, I am recruiting for a spring semester intern. Obviously, the holidays and exam time, I don't, you know, see that I'll have any assistance really through the holidays, but hopefully in the, in the spring, and then having another paid summer intern, you know, next summer. But I just wanted to be able to publicly thank him for the work he did this semester.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. Thanks for your report. I'll go to council reports, start at this end this time, Mr. Vance.
I don't have a council report, but I just want to say that to the staff, I appreciate your hard work with the limited staff that you do have, understanding that there's tremendous competition and people are moving all over. And as it has been mentioned, it's not only here, it's where I work, it's at, in other municipalities and other governmental agencies. I see it all over as a constant, as a constant moving target, so. And plus, as Mr. Matthews says, we are growing. And that means that it'd be a strain on resources to get things done in a timely fashion, and there will be more, I mean, more, I believe more, more, not controversial, but more conversations about developments as they come forth and just challenges in trying to get things through. But again, I appreciate your hard work in doing what you can, do what you currently have available. I know that you're trying to fill those positions, and it takes time to get the right fit, as it goes back to what Chief Smith said about having that culture and getting the right fit to work in harmony and going in the same direction of the goals of the council and us. So it's a lot of, a lot of things going on, and I appreciate what you've done. And I would like to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, and I'm on the road in the morning, I hope.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dillinger?
Yeah, just two quick things. One, on the parade, I'm on the committee for the parade. We're organizing, and after the event and the tragedy in Raleigh, we immediately started looking at what other things we could do. On our meeting on Sunday, Deputy Chief was there, and our committee was there, and it was our number one sort of priority. So we're working very diligently to add some safety measures and preparedness with regards to vehicles and drivers to avoid something like that happening next week. The other is, I will take the mayor's comment to me during the meeting under advisement regarding my implication on staff. However, I will be following up with staff to get more information. That's not the first time I've heard, I've never heard it like that before, but I've heard sort of frustrations before. So I think it's kind of come into a point where I'll look into a little bit more.
Make sure. Ms. Berninger?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to reiterate that I will follow up on talking with NCDOT about getting the improvements made to Wind Road. When I went to training with the School of Government, when I was elected the very first time, they told us our, our job was not to defend, it was to solve. And all too often I hear, "Oh, we can't do that, oh, we can't do that, oh, we can't do that." Well, I think what we need to ask sometimes is, how can we do that? So I will be making some phone calls and annoying some people, but I'm going to work on it and take it on as a, yes.
Can I ask, before you do that, can you allow us to call our district engineer?
Absolutely.
And go through the channels and see what we hear?
And good luck on getting him to call you back.
Yeah.
Because he doesn't call me back. So.
Heck, I don't call you back sometimes.
Do what?
Nothing.
Okay, I'll go to Mr. Singleton.
Mr. Dillinger mentioned the safety measures he quoted in the article in the News Observer, they talked, they talked, and all the, all the, what are y'all, measures being drafted all sound very solid. Also, there's an article on WRL about that and Garner's mentioned. Something, you know, they've, they've almost got the bridge on New Bethel Road complete. They have completed the sidewalks. So there are now sidewalks from Highway 50 at Centennial all the way to and through Sutton Springs. There's just one section missing to get to Clifford Road, and that's because the house has been there for many, many years, and it hadn't been redeveloped, there's no curb and gutter. But the sidewalk goes all the way almost to Clifford Road now. That improvement, getting that on that bridge is, is a huge difference. So that's very helpful. Something I have learned, and I strongly suggest, and I'll pass this along to staff, that we strongly consider is, I understand some other towns in Wake County, I believe Apex and Cary, or two of them, maybe more, that are requiring developers to put at the end of stub streets, a sign, a metal sign on a metal post or a wooden post. I'm not talking about a temporary sign like, you know, that we have for rezoning, that says, "This street is stubbed." In Wake, in this area, there's a good chance that the stub of this street will connect to development on the other side. So it lets people know that. I'm sure it's Cary and Apex, and I think there's a couple more towns. That's something we, policy, we need to implement it, once we find out what needs to be done and make developers put that in stub streets. I mean, I thought about Auburn Village tonight, there was one there, people didn't know it's gonna happen. And of course, the lady said that we know development was coming, but I think that's a very reasonable requirement on these stub streets, so people know that, hey, this is a stub, and one day it may connect to future development. It can't hurt. So I want to pass that along. I'm done.
Mr. Matthews?
In words of late Jackie Johns, I concur. That's all I got, sir.
All right, thank you. In light of the hour, yeah, I don't have anything specific tonight, so I don't believe we, do we have a closed session for anybody tonight?
I hope not.
Not tonight.
Not that I'm aware of.
We all hope not.
All right.